All right, let's get started. Zoning commission will come to order. Good evening, everyone, and I'll call to order at 7:03 PM. The Stratford zoning commission meeting for July the 28th, 2021 is now open for public hearing for those petitions advertised to be heard at this session. Commissioner Vacola is not present, so Ms. Manos will be sitting in for him until such time as he arrives, if he does. Should any items on tonight's agenda take more time than anticipated, this public hearing may conclude at 11:00 PM and may be continued to another date, which will be established at that time. Any items not heard tonight will be heard at the continued public hearing if we need to go down that way. For the record, petitions to be heard this evening will be advertised in the Connecticut Post. We're advertising the Connecticut Post on July the 15th and July the 22nd. The chair has been advised of a request due to the anticipated length of petition number one, 4060 Beach Drive in Washington Parkway, that one of the items on the agenda is requested if they could move ahead. 584 Success Avenue, is there objection from any members from hearing Success Avenue first? Hearing no objection. 584 Success Avenue, petition of J.C. Jeep Auto Club LLC seeking a site plan review and special case to approve a private club not operated for profit in a CA zone. Good evening, Attorney Knott.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Manos, Madam Secretary, Ms. Atora, members of the commission. I think we need to have the petition read.
Yeah, I just read that, sir.
Oh, okay. My name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn with offices at 1656 Main Street in Stratford. I'm here this evening on behalf of J.C. Jeep Charitable Organization, Inc., doing business as J.C. Jeep Auto Club, 584 Success Avenue, Stratford. At this time, I'd like to submit the certificates of mailing and make reference to photos and exhibits, which I have just handed to each of you in a folder, to which I will be making reference during the course of my presentation. I'd also like to submit a revised floor plan, full size, which I told Susmeetha I would bring to the meeting. You already have a copy of this in the folders that I handed to you. This is an application for special case approval to establish a bona fide club not operated for profit at 584 Success Avenue. The property is located in a CA zone. As you know, in Stratford, the CA zone is commercial in nature. This address is located in retail strip center, which has a variety of commercial uses on site. Section 4.1.6.6 and 20 of the Stratford zoning regulation provide that a bona fide club not operated for profit is a permitted use in this zone, subject to special case approval. At this time, I'd like to reference the site plan, which is Exhibit 1. And you can see, if you look at it carefully, that the premises that is the subject of this application is 1,470 square feet in size. It's located in the building that is 13,006 square feet in size on a lot that is 1.52 acres in size. Exhibit 2 is the interior seating plan of the premises. Essentially, the interior consists of a social club area containing a total of 23 seats, made up of six bar stools at the bar and 17 seats at six tables. There is also a billiard table located in the middle of the open space to the rear of the facility. Also at the rear is the mechanical room, the kitchen, and the bathroom. J.C. Jeep Auto Club is the trade name of the J.C. Jeep Charitable Organization, Inc., which is a private not-for-profit club operated under the laws of the state of Connecticut. Reference 3, excuse me, Exhibit 3 are copies of the corporate documentation, including the organization and first annual report, minutes of the first membership meeting, minutes of the first meeting of the incorporators, minutes of the first meeting of the board of directors, and the bylaws of this nonprofit corporation. The membership of this club currently consists of approximately 12 persons and their families, all of whom own Jeep motor vehicles. The purpose of the club is to provide fundraising through charitable events for Didi or ill persons in the community. For example, in April of this year, the club held a fundraiser to raise money for a young lady suffering from leukemia. In June, it held another fundraiser for a young lady who needed help with her medical expenses and to pay her rent and monthly utilities while she was recuperating from her illness. The club holds approximately one such charitable event per month. At other times, the facility will be used by members or rented to non-members for baby showers, birthday parties, after baptism lunches, et cetera. Now, at this time, I'd like to reference Exhibits 4 through 12, which are the photographs of the subject premises. Exhibit 4 is a photo taken a while back from across Success Avenue showing the strip center in its entirety. Exhibit 5 is a better picture, also taken from across the street, which shows this particular store with the yellow sign, and it is located approximately in the middle of the building. Now, in the back of Exhibit 4, you can see what the interior of the premises looks like. They just got through renovating the place, and this gentleman is doing some cleanup duties on the rear of that photograph. Exhibit 6 is another photo of the front of the building, and as you can see, Jeeps are prominently located to the front of the building, Jeeps owned by the members. And Exhibit 7 is a close-up of the actual storefront of this facility. The rear side of Exhibit 7 happens to be a photograph taken in Hartford when all of the Jeep clubs of Connecticut went to a church in hardship in Hartford to have all of their cars blessed by a priest at that particular parish, who was interested in getting involved in the Jeep club. As you can see, there are numerous vehicles involved in that photo. However, they're not all from this particular club. Now, Exhibit 8 is one of the flyers that the club sent out for the April 4th, 2021 fundraising event for this young lady who had leukemia. The other side of that photo is a group picture of some of the people that attended that fundraiser. Exhibit 9 is another flyer for the same event, the April 4th, 2021 event, and the rear side has photos of some of the people who attended in front of the building. Exhibit 10 is a flyer for the June event, and this was for a young lady by the name of Vanessa, who had medical expenses as a result of a serious illness. They raised money for her, as I indicated, for rent, metal expenses, and utilities. Exhibit 11 is a picture of a birthday cake that was involved in one of the birthday parties that the club members had, and on the back of that, you'll see some of the people that were in attendance at that birthday party. Photograph number 12 is a birthday party for a 50-year-old person at the club, and the backside of that is a photo of one of my clients getting the bar ready for the party. Finally, as far as the exhibits are concerned, Exhibit 13, rather, is the Fire Marshal's notice of maximum occupancy, reflecting the fact that the premises have been inspected by the Fire Marshal and is fit for occupancy. Now, at this point, I want to discuss Jay's administrative comments. He says, "The commission may choose to inquire about how the club qualifies as a bona fide club not operated for profit." My response to that is, you can see from Exhibit 3, "The club is a legitimate non-for-profit corporation, and I have provided you with the corporate documentation evidencing same." He goes on to say, "Examples of charitable events might be helpful for the commission to better understand the club's purpose." And I respond by saying, "I have indicated earlier in this presentation the type of charitable events that the club conducts, and I have provided you with photographs of flyers advertising same." Those are Exhibits 8, 9, and 10. Jay asks, "How many events are anticipated each month?" As I indicated, it is currently anticipated that approximately one charitable event will be conducted per month. How many members are affiliated with the club? As I indicated, currently, there are 12 members and their families who are affiliated with the club. In order to be eligible for membership in the club, you have to own a Jeep. So it's not like people are going to be signing up left and right, except for Jeep owners. Jay asks, "As there is no liquor for the subject use, how will the club police the consumption/distribution of alcohol by members and non-members when the space is rented for events?" The club is closed to the public unless a non-member rents the facility for a baptism, sweet 15 party, birthday party, shower, et cetera. In this event, a club member will always be present on the premises to act as a door person, a chaperone, and ultimately, a maintenance man after the event is over. By the way, this application was on the June 23rd, 2021 agenda. You may remember it. It was withdrawn almost immediately. The original petition was for special case approval and a private club liquor license. The liquor license application was withdrawn because we determined, after we submitted the application, that a private club not-for-profit is not eligible for a liquor license until after it's been in existence for three years. And this is a brand-new club, so they weren't eligible for a liquor license. As a result of that, we withdrew the application for the liquor license. Jay asks, "Will there be live entertainment on site?" Answer, no. Live entertainment will not be permitted on the site. Music will be provided through a cellphone with a Bluetooth speaker. Additionally, there are three 42-inch flat-screen TVs on the premises and a billiard table. Jay also discusses the necessity of the application complying with the special case criteria set forth in Section 20.2.1 of the zoning regulations. The first such criteria is, "Will the use be in conformance of all the requirements of the district in which the property is located?" My answer to that is, I have indicated earlier in my presentation, this property is located in the commercial zone, and a nonprofit private club is a permitted use in the commercial zone, subject to special case approval, and I'm here for that special case approval tonight. "Will the location be compatible in relation to the size of the property and the existing neighborhood development?" Answer, "A private club of this nature is compatible with a variety of the other commercial uses currently located on this site." The whole site are commercial uses. "Will the proposed use be in conformance with the town plan of development?" As I indicated, the proposed use is a permitted use in this zone, and therefore, is compatible with the town plan of development. "Will the location and details of proposed use adversely affect safety in the street or increased traffic congestion in the area?" This proposed nonprofit club will contain a minimum of members, 12, and will conduct a minimum number of activities so as not to adversely affect safety in the street or increased traffic congestion. "Will there be any emission of noise, light, smoke, odor, gas, dust, vibration that may adversely affect land, water, or air quality?" No such adverse effect will result, because this is a relatively benign activity. When it comes to activities in commercial zones, this is a pretty benign activity. "Will the proposed use adversely affect tax valuation of neighboring properties?" There will be no adverse effect on tax valuation of neighboring properties, because the use is of a minimal and benign nature and is permitted in the commercial zone in which it is being proposed. Finally, "Will the use create any fire or police hazards?" This application has received no adverse comments from the police department or the fire department as a result of the review process that all special case applications go through. You can also see from Exhibit 13 that the Fire Marshal has signed off on the safety aspect of the facility. Accordingly, no such hazards are anticipated. Therefore, I believe I have responded to all the questions raised in the administrative comments. I've satisfied all the special case approval criteria, and I would ask this application be approved so that the club members can continue with their good works at this location as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions from commissioners? Ms. Henry.
You had mentioned about a liquor license. With the liquor license, was it their intent to sell alcohol, and now they'll just...
Well, to be honest with you, when I first met with them, they thought they had to have a liquor license in order to operate a nonprofit club, conducting itself in activities as I have just described to you. They thought they needed a liquor license in order to do that. They don't need a liquor license in order to do that. They can do that as a private club, as long as they're not selling liquor. It's not a problem with the liquor commission. Now, three years from now, who knows what they may decide to do at that point in time? But to be honest with you, I would be surprised if they ever apply for a liquor license at this location. It's only 1,400 square feet, you know? And everything they want to do, they can do as a private club without a liquor license. And liquor licenses, they're expensive.
Yeah, yeah. And as far as the parking goes, I know you had some pictures there.
Well, the pictures I showed you was the front of the building. And back, it is a huge empty lot of over an acre of empty space. So there's more than adequate parking on this site for a zillion cars.
And is there access to the club from the rear of the building where the parking?
Yes, there's a rear door to the club, yeah.
Okay, that's all I had.
Thank you, sir. Any other members? Commissioner Francis?
Yeah, so they want a liquor license to maybe eventually sell liquor? Or is it just...
They originally applied for... They originally thought they were eligible for a liquor license, which is why we applied for approval from you in June. As it turns out, they're not eligible. In the meantime, I sat down with them and went over with them what activities they're interested in doing and whether they can do it without a liquor license. And as it turns out, the activities that they're interested in doing are all the ones that I just articulated. And they don't need a liquor license to do that. Now, whether things are going to change three years from now, I don't know, but I suspect they're never going to need a liquor license here, because it's such a small club.
Well, that's an assumption. You don't know what they want to do down the line.
Right.
And is there a liquor license in that structure already?
There's a bar there. I think it's called JR's. So there's at least one bar there. But this place is not going to be competing with that bar at all.
But no package stores?
No, no, no. I don't know about package stores. No, no package stores.
And has the residents had any objections to them? Or have they addressed the residents? Because I mean, there are residents. There's a couple complexes around there and residents around them.
Let me tell you about the residences. There's a condominium immediately behind this acre and a half property. It's Henry Avenue, it's a Henry Avenue condo, I forget the name of it. So pursuant to your regulations, I had to send notices to abudders. And when you abut a condominium property, you've got to send a notice to every person who owns a unit in the condominium. I sent out 120 letters. Cost 140 bucks. And one day, I get a call from a guy. "Why did I get a letter from you?" I don't like getting letters from lawyers. And I'm saying to him, I didn't recognize this guy, you know? So it finally dawned on me that he was one of the people that lived in the condo. I said, "You got a letter from me because I'm required to send all the abutting property owners, including all the condominium unit owners, a letter telling them about what my client is planning on doing." "What's he planning on doing?" I said, "He's going to have a charitable private club for people that own Jeeps." "Oh, I don't care about that." You know? But so then, when we didn't go forward in June, and we were now on for tonight, I had to send them all a letter again. Another 140 bucks. This time, I didn't get any telephone calls from them, so...
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Henry?
So some of the pictures you had showed, I mean, they weren't drawings, they were actual pictures.
Yeah.
So the club is in existence already?
No, what happened was this. My client signed a lease to rent this property, not realizing that he needed zoning approval. And this was in the spring, okay? So somehow, I think the health department found out that the place was open, they were getting it geared up to open up, and either the health department or the fire department went up there and said, "You know, you can't do this without zoning approval." And at that point, they had started to renovate the place. And they contacted Jay, and Jay told them that they had to stop operating the facility until they get their zoning approval. So when we couldn't go forward in June, Dave, my clients, were devastated, because they've been paying rent on this place and haven't been able to use it since, like, March. So that's why those photos exist.
So they had been using it, though?
No, 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 not since they got notice from Jay.
No, no, not before.
Yeah, for a couple of weeks, maybe.
So they had no complaints during that timeframe?
No, 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 no.
I mean, whatever the activities will be, will be the same as what they were doing towards that before they were made aware?
Right.
And there were no complaints during that timeframe?
Nope.
The back lot there, do they intend to use that for gathering?
Well, I don't know if it's going to be necessary. What they do is, you know, if you look at that thing from the Fire Marshal, they can only have either 43 or 49 people there, I think. So, and most of their meetings are at night. Now, when they have their meetings at night, most of the stores are closed. So parking is not going to be a problem.
Would they need some special permit from the town if they were to have some type of gathering, a Jeep jamboree, so to speak, in the rear lot, there's an acre?
That I cannot tell you. I don't know that, Mike.
Okay.
I don't know. I know they were having... When they were in Bridgeport, they were having outdoor events in Bridgeport, and they got permission from the city to close a street upon which the outdoor event was taking place. They did that twice. And the city gave them the permit, and there were no problems as far as that was concerned.
So typically, when we do, say, a carnival, you know, not to say there would be something to that extent, but we do a carnival, they'll come, get the proper permits. I'd just like to make sure that if they were going to do some type of a large gathering in the rear lot, it's a large lot, and with Jeeps, you're not necessarily limited to smooth terrain.
Right. Oh, no, they could be doing any of it.
But I'm just saying, if they decided to have 1,000 Jeeps over for a jamboree in the rear acre lot, that they would... They would come to the town to take out a permit prior to, to make sure that they met all the fire... Just like we do with a carnival, the fire, the police, whatever, and just that, you know, we would ask that if we approve it, that that would be something they would do if that was their intent, and they may or may not, but...
If you look at the last paragraph of Jay's administrative comments, he suggests that you impose a condition on the approval, that they will apply for any special permits they need from zoning, should that become necessary. He actually mentions that in his administrative comments.
If any of the members of the town staff would want to chime in on this conversation so that it's clear to the applicant and their counsel what their legal responsibilities are, that'd be fine?
Sure. Good evening, I'm Susmeetha Atora, town planner. Typically, when you... When your client is planning to hold an outdoor event, he would be required to seek permit from the town and go through all proper channels, like fire, police, and zoning. So like you said, approval can be conditional, stating that in the future, if any, you know, if the scope of work changes or, you know, legalizing the work that has already been done, you have to follow the zoning and building regulations.
Yeah, obviously, we have no problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
My only question... Actually, that answered my question, because it was actually regarding the rear lot of the property and how that would be used. So I think you answered that, so I think we're good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, are there any members of the public that wish to speak in favor of this petition only? Anybody wish to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody wish to speak in opposition to this petition? Okay. Now, we'll take a motion to close the public hearing for this item.
Motion to close.
Motion to close. Mr. Henry, second Mr. Vigliotti, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, Mr. Henry.
Would it make sense to address some of these other out-of-order, or do we...
That is probably a prudent idea. Is either counsel for Curran Volkswagen or George Perdomo present?
Yes, for your...
Okay, I will ask the applicant for Beach Drive, do you have any problem if they would go ahead of you? No? Okay.
No.
No.
It's fine with me.
It's going to be a short application.
It's going to be a short one.
You know? You're going to be here all night either way. So it might be courteous to allow somebody else...
Okay, guys, let's come to order. Let's come to order. I did, as much as I'd like to do, Mr. Knott had approached me about it and made the request ahead of time. Let's stick to the way the agenda actually is, so let's just keep things moving, so... Item 2, 40 to 60 Beach Drive and 24 Washington Parkway, petition of Platypus Partners LLC seeking a site plan review and special case approval to establish an outdoor entertainment and dining venue in a WF zone. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, members of the commission.
Just some procedural issue before we start up. So just for the record, this is a continuation of last month's public hearing. Members had questions, and we wanted some additional clarification, so it was extended. So the way it will work is, you will have the floor to talk about your proposal. We have comments and some official communications that we will go through to make sure that that's entered into our public record, and then it will be open to public comment. The hope here is that, and we have been advised by counsel, that we really need to get this petition wrapped up today or in the next couple of days, because we have a statutory deadline. So we're going to ask that we try to move through this as quickly and efficiently as possible. So, Susmeetha, do you want to go through the official comments that we've received first? Okay. I will yield to our town planner, acting P&amp;Z administrator tonight.
Yes, so between June 23rd and today, we received 27 emails from the public, 14 in support and 13 opposed to the proposal. We received waterfront harbor management commission's comments, and they have, you know, offered a denial as a recommendation. We also received Connecticut Deeps recommendation letter this afternoon, and they seem to be okay with the proposal as presented. We also have health department comments and received certificates of mailing from you, like requested last time. And also, you have provided us an updated application summary and operating plan, too.
I do, yeah.
Okay, the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. My name is Doug Grab. I'm part of Platypus Partners, and I'm here today to talk about a special exception zoning for the lots at 4060 Beach and 24 Washington. I'm going to refer to those as Seawall Park, because it's a lot easier to say than naming the parcels. I'd like to present our certificates of mailing, so these are entered into the record. And it was interesting watching Barry go through his presentation. So that's the way you're supposed to do it, and hopefully, I can follow in his footsteps here. I passed out a folder to many... Everyone should have one. It's got some nice color pictures in it, and I'll try to speak into the microphone so everyone can hear. And it gives a summary of what we're proposing here, you know, why we're proposing it. Should I go through that again, or is that what you've already heard last time? I want to be brief, but I don't want to be redundant. Should I go through the summary again, or... Okay, perfect. So what we would like to do is secure a permit for an outdoor dining and entertainment facility with the working name Seawall Park at the lots I previously mentioned. We feel this is consistent with the town of Stratford's plan of conservation and development, consistent with the historical use of the lots, consistent with waterfront zoning regulations. Those lots are zoned waterfront, commercial, and complementary to the area businesses, beneficial to the community to encourage use of the Seawall area as an open-air gathering space and outdoor recreation location. And with recent events with COVID, I think the more outdoor spaces we have, probably the better. We feel that the environmental impact on the lot is minimal, as operations would be housed in professionally modified and removable shipping containers anchored on existing permeable natural surfaces, and all existing plantings and landscape materials will remain and be improved. Meaning that our construction impact on the lot is nil. I mean, we basically have whatever we need to operate there now. So, on your, on the second page, there's a current as-built survey, letter size, and you can get an overview of the lot. I have larger copies if you'd like. I believe you were all sent those prior to the last meeting. So, kind of hard to read, but I have a blow-up over here. I'm not sure the best way to do this, so everybody can see, and I can talk into the microphone, it's a little odd. But, this is the lot, this is Beach Drive here, there's the ocean, we colored it blue. And we'll be going through the different colors that you see on the picture here. So, currently, we're currently operating under Governor Lamont's Executive Order seven double M, allowing for and encouraging for expansion of outdoor dining and beverage service through our tenant Little Pub, that we located across the street. We are also currently using it for our other tenant, Surfside Hotel, they are storing their paddle boards and their kayaks there for the use of their guests. And, you know, it's been going fine so far. On the next diagram, you'll see explanation of what the different containers are and their locations. So, under the diagram called Current Footprint, you can see the four shipping containers, A, B, C, and D. A is being used for beverage and snacks and ice cream and, you know, retail there. B is being used for onsite food preparation. C is being used for storage and retail, and D is being used for recreational equipment storage. So, that's the use of the four containers there, they've been professionally modified, they don't look like something that came off a Maersk shipping container. They're painted bright white, they have full electricity, one has full plumbing, and they are about as nice as it comes with few considered shipping containers. And at the edge, at the end of your proposal, you'll see some modified ones that have been further modified. There's twenty-four picnic tables on a crush shell surface. There's parking for twenty-nine cars on a gravel lot. There's parking for eighteen bicycles there. There's two porta-potties from G.I. John. There's a handwashing station, there's string lighting that's been built on maritime pilings, and there's a maritime-style rope and piling barrier that surrounds the active part of the lot. So, we like the way it's looking, it's consistent with what, you know, a nautical place might look like. And the access, there's a pedestrian access off of Washington Parkway, you know, protected, and then the access to the parking lot is also off of Washington Parkway. Plenty of room to turn around. There's twenty-nine public spaces, I have auxiliary parking for five staff, so they can park behind the containers and make their way around. Proposed uses, well, we want to continue, we're trying to secure a permit for an outdoor dining and entertainment facility so that we can continue to provide food and beverage service there and then host events. And I think events has become the latest buzzword. And whether that's musicians, or weddings, or fundraisers, or road races, I mean, or dog adoptions, I mean, we've we're having a wedding in September there, we were supposed to have a dog adoption last week, and it got canceled because of rain. We had a road race there for charity on May second. I sound like Barry, but we've actually done all these charitable events here. So, it's a beautiful location. And people really enjoy coming down there, and we want the ability to be able to continue to do that. So, food would be a combination of either to go from Little Pub or onsite food preparation. You might see a lobster shack there, if seafood prices ever come back to normal. We can certainly grill hamburgers and hot dogs there, the type of food that people are used to eating on picnic tables when they go to a seaside location. For entertainment, we're applying for an entertainment permit, because it's been Pandora's box. We didn't realize that Stratford had an ordinance on their books that prohibited entertainment. We have a liquor license that allows it, but Stratford has a special law in their books that not everyone was aware of, including us, that you can't have live entertainment unless you have a special permit. And as far as I know, there's only one place in town that has one, so we want to play by the rules, we want to make sure we're doing everything the right way, so we're applying for an entertainment permit so that when we do have entertainment, which is broadly defined, it's not only musicians, it could be a comedian, it could be a magician, it could be an actor, you know, reciting Shakespeare, it could be a person doing anything. That's considered entertainment. Now, whether or not you find it entertaining, that's your personal preference, but that's all entertainment. So, we just want to make sure we have the correct permitting in place so that we are playing by the rules and doing the right thing. There's another picture there called Future Uses, and I debated putting this in, but I just wanted to share where we might be going with this, or, you know, where we'd like to go with it. We currently rent kayaks and paddle boards to hotel guests, or the Surfside Hotel currently rents paddle boards and kayaks to hotel guests. We have had some interest from local entrepreneurs that would like to run a similar business for the public. We don't rent to the public because we just, that's not our, that's not what the Surfside Hotel does. They just want to rent rooms and make sure their guests are happy. So, having the ability to, for any resident or any visitor to go down and rent a paddleboard and go paddling around seems like a pretty nice use of the, pretty nice use of the location down there. At the hotel, they also run wellness activities, like beach yoga, and, you know, therapeutic massages and those sorts of things. So, having the ability for a third party to do beach yoga across the street would be also beneficial, it'd be on private property, not on the public beach. And, again, that's not something where, that the hotel is certainly is interested in doing just because it's not in the day-to-day operations, running a yoga class. But, it certainly would be nice to have a wellness class, you know, out there. And thirdly, future use, vendor space for craft vendors. So, we've been approached by, you know, people that design t-shirts, or knickknacks, or nautical sorts of things. And they'd like to set up a shop that, you know, people who are wandering by the beach might pop up and buy something, and so. That type of activity is just, it creates an atmosphere, it creates, you know, an energy, as long as you're doing it right, you know, it'd be a nice day for anybody to walk down there and enjoy. So, those are future uses. To the extent they need permits, you know, we'll come back and talk to everybody about that, I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that it's not just about dining and entertainment, it's going to be about a whole holistic sort of seaside experience down there. So, here's the operation summary, and this is the details that we were lacking last time I was here. Food and beverage service, we're asking for seven days between the hours of twelve PM and nine PM. And we've talked about the food service already. Entertainment, this will be the longer topic. So, we've requested for seven days on non-repeating days, in non-concurrent three-hour blocks, stipulated between the hours of twelve to eight PM Monday through Thursday, twelve to ten PM Friday and Saturday, and twelve to six PM Sundays. So, for example, acoustic musician Wednesday night, you know, five to seven, no entertainment on Thursday, and an amplified band maybe Friday, six to nine. So, I understand the commission's difficulty in trying to decide how do we create something that doesn't exist? I mean, you don't have any frame or reference for this sort of operation in Stratford, as far as I know, so. I'm used to, I'm used to, hey, tell me what I can do, and I'll do that, not ask for something and then we'll tell you if it's okay, so. Took me a little while to get my head around that. And in talking to the neighbors, and I've talked to many neighbors, and getting feedback from people in the area, not only Lordship, but in Stratford, I thought the prudent thing to do would be to put some pretty strict stipulations around it. These are about as strict as I, you know, could come up with. So, in practical terms, you'd have music like two hours a day every other day. I mean, that's, and it wouldn't be every other day, because some days it wouldn't make sense. And the reason we asked for seven days is because you never know what day Cinco de Mayo might fall on, and it might be nice to have a mariachi guy down there or something, so. It's kind of, you know, we've asked for seven days, will it be seven days? No, well, it couldn't be anyway, because it's every other day. It'd be two hours a day max, so it wouldn't be twelve to nine, twelve hours of music, it would be two hours. And if I can, if the commission will work with me to further fence that in, I'd be happy to work with it. I mean, I know the nightmare of, I think it was Riverview Cafe that was mentioned last time. And, I mean, certainly, I don't have any intention of doing that, but of course, we need to stipulate it. But, when you think about it, we have a twenty-seven-room hotel across the street promoting wellness and, you know, relaxation. Why would I jeopardize that by putting some sort of crazy party pit next door? I wouldn't, I'm not stupid. We're trying to create an aura down there, an atmosphere of, you know, relaxation and welcoming, and fun, frankly. I mean, you know, you should be able to have fun, but fun doesn't have to be mean fun, fun can just be, hey, I'm having a good time. You know, and it's nice to come down here. So, in terms of amplified music or unamplified music, I know that's another bugaboo. How is it going to be noisy with the neighbors? We don't know until we try, right? But, as a condition of approval, I said, look, we'll build some sort of band shell. Now, I'm not saying we're building a band shell there, but some sort of barrier that would keep the music from reverberating backwards. We'll point all the speakers forwards, and any band shell or noise cloaking device would be removable and not there permanently. So, we're not proposing some sort of giant thing, what we're proposing is, look, if there's a problem, we'll solve it. And we'll abide by all health department ordinances in terms of decibel levels and everything else. So, like, some of those rules are clear, so. Show me the rules, I'll follow the rules. Some of the stuff is, we have to make it up as we go along, and I understand that's really hard. I mean, it's hard for everybody. I just want to make sure that everyone understands what the intention is. Because I've read some stuff, like, we're going to get the Rolling Stones. And that would be awesome if we could get the Rolling Stones. I mean, I think we'd all be pretty happy, you'd all want to get tickets, and you'd all be my best friends, but we're not getting the Rolling Stones, so that's not going to happen. In terms of, you know, amplification, there is a little diagram there in your, in your, in your package. It's got a little guitar player in between container B and C. There are some speakers marked, they're shooting the sound out over Beach Drive, and you can see some sort of, it looks like a V, that's supposed to indicate the sound curtain, or the sound cloaking barrier, or band shell. So, that's entertainment. Hopefully, you were entertained. And we'll go to the facility summary next. So, again, well, I mean, we already kind of went through this, so I don't think we need to do it again, but at the risk of skipping a page, temporary shipping containers, parking for twenty-nine cars and five five staff cars, you know, if needed. In terms of seating, twenty-four picnic tables. We estimate, you know, in our years of operating restaurants, most parties are two or four people, and so the average number is three. So, you know, twenty-four tables times three people is seventy-two people. You know, twenty-four people times four people is ninety-six people. I don't know anyone that's ever sat six people at a picnic table, I think it's a physical impossibility. It just, you'd have to really jam in there, and it wouldn't be very comfortable, so. My sense is, my estimate is, the max capacity of seats there would be ninety-six people, right? So, I just don't know how we get past that. We have two portable restrooms on site, we talked about that. We have a garbage collection on site, it's conjunction with the garbage collection at the hotel and the restaurant across the street. Exterior lighting is in the form of string lights on these poles, you know, so a nice little soft light there. It's operating procedure to turn those off after operations. The lot is, and you don't care about this, but the lot's a combination of gravel parking, crush shell, customer area, and natural sand border. We intend to keep everything in that way, we like a nice permeable natural surface down by the water, not to disturb anything. You know, there's some planting, some natural boulders. We are, you know, we've been blessed that Mother Nature is intent upon planting seagrass on the sand area, so we're going to let that grow, because we think it's going to look nice, so. What you'll end up with is a, is a green border around a, around a pink shell, you know, kind of area against a, against a, you know, with a gray parking lot back. And a big red English phone booth plopped right in the middle for, you know, more fun. So, we, you know, we bought the lot, we cleaned it up, you know, we'll continue to improve it. I've hired landscapers, I'm just not sure what is going to be appropriate or required, if we need to plant screening plants for sound barriers, you know. I'll do anything down there. I mean, it's not like we haven't already spent a bunch of money without a, without a, you know, without an idea in mind. We own stuff, we clean it up, we take care of it, same thing we did at the hotel, so. That's the business that we run. We can go through Jay's questions, you know, I saw, you know, I thought that was very useful when Barry did that. So, his first question, you know, well, it's not a question, it says it conforms to the requirements of the district, so that's okay. Question number two, will the location size and intensity of such use be compatible and harmonious in relation to the size of the property and existing neighborhood development? Here you go. Okay, so, that's the big question, will it be? We think it will be. I mean, you're going to hear a bunch of comments tonight about stuff that happened, you know, last year during COVID summer, which to me is an anomaly, because, you know, and we've talked about that last time. You know, here's the thing, you know, we opened in September, September twentieth of two thousand and nineteen. It's July twenty-seventh, that's like six hundred and seventy-seven days. Six hundred and seventy, I don't know when leap year was. But in six hundred and seventy-seven days, you're going to hear about four events that happened. That is like a half of a percent of our operating. So, you can read in the Connecticut Post about public urination and defecation. As far as I know, there was one occurrence of public defecation in some lady's yard. And I spoke to this woman, and we had a very nice conversation after our last meeting, and I was like, look, I don't, I'm horrified, I don't know why people would do that, but they didn't come from our place, we have four bathrooms. If our guests feel the need to relieve themselves, then by all means, we have four bathrooms for you, you know, use that, you don't need to go across the street. And furthermore, I, I'm like, I'm reading the paper, and I'm going, it sounds like Bourbon Street down there. I mean, if public urination and defecation was such a rampant problem, I would know about it, and I would be complaining about it. And if I was the cause of it, you can bet the police and the health department would come down and hit me like a ton of bricks. But, you know what, that sells papers, that gets next-door posts going. And you know what, I don't, I don't take any credit for that, or I don't take any blame for it, nor do I take blame for smoking pot on the Seawall, so. I don't know about harmony with the neighbors, okay? We're harmonious with some, I think I have some support here, and we're not so harmonious with others, but I do know this, I have tried. I have reached out to everybody, you know, I made myself available every morning for a week, and then for another week. I've had ice cream socials, I have, you know, met with people that opposed it, and have, we've come to common ground once we actually talk. So, we are willing to work with anybody, we are not trying to, you know, enforce our way on anything. We want to make sure that everybody's happy, to the extent we all can be happy. Long-winded answer to a question, which you're going to hear about an hour's worth of comments from next. But I'll close that question with, you know, we may not all want the same thing, but we all don't want the same thing, and that's chaos at the Seawall, that serves no purpose, and that is not what we are proposing at all, so. If we can turn the volume down a little bit, which is an interesting metaphor, and then, you know, maybe talk and listen, you have two ears, one mouth. and then, you know, maybe talk and listen, you have two ears, one mouth. Listen, use your ears and listen to what's being said, then maybe we can get to some sort of harmony. That's my, that's my hope. Jay's third question, okay, we meet, we meet the, the town development, you know, so that's fine. Fourth question, will the design location and specific details of the proposed use adversely affect safety in the streets or increase traffic congestion in the area or interfere with the pattern of circulation? I am, I'm throwing out last year because, you know, it was an anomaly down there. Those are the only two beaches open in Connecticut that people could visit. The town beaches were, were at half capacity, and if you didn't get there in time, you were shut out. State parks were, were full by 6:00 AM. The only two beaches in Connecticut that I know of were the one in front of the hotel and the one on the other end of the seawall, and everybody in Tri-State area knew about that. So you had all sorts of people coming down. They weren't coming down to see us. That would be flattering, but once they got down there, of course, well, there was nothing to do because there's nothing to do down there except for go to Little Pub, go to Riley's, go get some pizza, go to Lordship Deli, or, you know, maybe go fishing. So they became customers, but it wasn't like we were bringing them down there. It was just influx of people with nothing to do and no public facilities on either beach. You know, we became the de facto public facilities and clearly some people chose not to use them. And you know what? I can offer you a bathroom if you need one, but if you don't use it, that's not, that's not on me. So, you know, traffic, there's never going to be enough parking down there. But I can tell you this, in this summer, this summer, you know, with the auxiliary lot at 24 Washington, we've had a full restaurant and a full hotel. The hotel has been, has been full occupancy on weekends, so all 27 rooms packed, and the restaurant is busy, right? So we have the patio, the inside, and the auxiliary patio on the other side. I've had that place full and the lot next door has been empty on weekdays. On week, on weekend nights, it fills up, but it's not a, it's not a constant problem every day. And when it fills up at night, it's auxiliary parking for people that I'm, that are coming to visit us, ostensibly. I mean, some of these people are parking for Riley's, and I'm not chasing them out of there, you know, like, no, you can't park here. I'm, you know, I got other things to do. But it's become a, a relief valve for, for the area. And I think that when you hear stories about tangled vine last year and the cars going up the street, that's, and last time I was here, I said, it's not going to happen again. It hasn't happened again. And that's not because we haven't had events at the lot. We've moved those events over to the restaurant. Just, it's due to staffing and the same people show up. So I think we've shown an ability to manage stuff pretty well. Remember, 678 days and, and four incidents that you're going to hear about. That's a pretty good batting average. I mean, you know, we don't have the police coming to us all the time. We've never had the police called there for, for a customer, you know? So I, it's, will it be harmonious, you know? Will it, will it affect safety in the streets, you know? We don't, we don't believe so. Will there be any emission of noise, light, smoke, odor, gas, dust, or vibration that may adversely affect land, water, or air quality? Yeah, if there's music, it may make noise. If it makes noise, we'll adjust the volume to be in line with whatever the town parameters are, which I believe is 64 decibels, one foot over the property line. So that's why we propose building some sort of, you know, band shell, not a permanent band shell, but some sort of, you know, structure that will shoot the music over the, over the water, you know, and away from people's homes. Will the proposed use adversely affect the tax evaluation of neighboring properties as a result of the proposed use? I don't know. All I know is my assessment went up this year. So my taxes on my property down there has, has increased. Home values seem to be increasing. You'll hear, you'll hear both sides of the story. Some people like activity down there, some people don't care for it. I mean, so it really depends on where you are, you know, where, where you think. But I don't think it's all bad. I don't, you know, I'm not a tax assessor. All I know is my assessment went up. And, you know, I think we've improved the, we've improved the energy of the neighborhood. Will the proposed use create any fire or police hazards? We don't believe so. No comments have been received from the fire or police department. We've never had to call the police down there for an unruly customer or any sort of issue. We've had the fire department down there for a couple of false alarms. We run a nice business. You know, it's, it's full of, you know, it's a family restaurant. It's not some sort of, you know, some sort of, you know, well, the, the antithesis of, or the, the opposite of a, of a family restaurant. I mean, you have people of all ages in there, you know, babies up until seniors. And most people like it, you know, you may not like the food, but you're going to get treated fair and, you know, you get good value for your money. So I, I, you know, I don't think it's going to create any fire or police hazards. You know, we, we haven't had them to date. We've been operation and at other locations and, you know, we're just not that type of place. Otherwise, we wouldn't keep expanding it. So that is the end of, of my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Okay, questions from commissioners? Commissioner Francis.
All right, mine's might be a little long, so I might give, give it a break.
Take as much time as you need, sir.
All right, so, I mean, I'm a third generation Stratford resident. All right, I've been here for, since I was born. And we've always been to the seawall, Russian Beach, and there was never parking. And that was with Marnecks. My wife's family owned the rink. That's no longer there. And there was never parking. So I want to understand how you figure adding 29 parking spaces but having events.
29, right?
29 parking spaces and having events and also having, what, canoe rentals? So I mean, it's, it's going to be a substantial amount of traffic.
Sure.
All right, so that's my first point. My second point is the safety. You have 24 benches for people sitting for the events?
Well, just for general use.
There's no sidewalks?
Uh, but they're fenced in. I'm sorry, I'll let you finish.
Right, they, they might be fenced in, but there is definitely safety issues I'm concerned about. So I'm just giving you the opportunity because I, I've, I've been a promoter.
Sure.
I've owned a restaurant in Stratford myself. So I'm, I'm not being against you, but I want to know these details because they are concerns to me.
Yeah.
And I'll let you answer those two first because I have a couple more.
Are you going to save the best one for last?
Well, that's a couple for last.
Okay, good. All right, well, in terms of events, if we were having an event there and we thought there would be a bunch of, an influx of people, we would hire a valet and, and have them pack the, pack the lot. We've had valets in other locations. We have a restaurant in Wilton with a very small parking lot and a restaurant in, in Greenwich with a very small parking lot. And what the valets are able to do, it's, it's like, you ever seen that game Tetris? Or, you know, it is, I've seen them put 40 cars in a lot for 17 cars. And as long as people understand that's the protocol, you, you can maximize the space. And look, let's be honest, people are driving around in SUVs. I mean, I've seen a lot. There's not, they're not good parkers, you know? So I mean, if you can help increase your space, you can increase the, the parking capacity there. So that's the way we would handle it if it, if it became a, a problem, Commissioner Francis. The, 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 what was the other question? I'm sorry, I was looking forward to your third.
The safety of the patrons that are going to be sitting around that barrier right near the street that are actually looking upon whoever's performing. I mean, you have some posts there.
Yeah, posts and ropes, yeah.
Roofs and ropes.
But they are, I mean, the street is here, the seating area is here, there's a sidewalk here. So I mean, they are, they are, gosh, that's got to be, these guys are 50 feet from the corner. These guys are, are 34 feet from the corner. So, and they're surrounded by ropes. So, you know, safety, we're all about safety. And, and in, in the proposal, if there's an event, we'll have, we'll have people there to manage it, right? I mean, we, we, we manage restaurants. We know how to, you know, corral people, you know, put them in the, and get them in the right slots and all that stuff. If we have to hire the police, if we, if we had an event, we had to hire the police, we'd hire the police. We had, we had the race in, on May 2nd. We had 150 people down there. And that was in the morning, but we hired a police officer because we had people running around the streets of Lordship. Wonderful day. I mean, they ran a, they ran a, they ran a 3K organized by a local guy. We gave all the money to Emerge, which is the local women's shelter, you know? So it's, we'll manage it. And you know what? It's not going to get out of control. If the cops need to be called, or if the cops need to be on site, it's probably not something we're going to do. Because who needs that? You know, if you think about the economics of, of, of having a band, now you got to pay them, well, you're a promoter, what, $400 or $500, right? You know, so $400 or $500. Then you got to tack a police officer on top of that. That's $350. $750 to sell, you know, $200 worth of extra food, it's not worth it. So we're not stupid people, you know, we're not going to have events just to have events. You, you may hear that all the events we had planned were liquor related, and there's a reason for that. And you might know this from your days of owning a restaurant. The liquor companies have big budgets. So the dog adoption that was scheduled for this past Sunday was sponsored by Tito's Vodka. Tito's Vodka will pay for the person that, that has the shelter to come down. And, you know, I mean, look, the people with the dogs, that's not free for them. They got to come down. They have to get compensated for that. So Tito's will cover that. They'll show up with all sorts of Tito's stuff for your dog, you know, that everyone can have fun Tito's giveaways. And you know what we have to do? We have to buy like $200 worth of Tito's. So it's, it's, the economics are like, that's the reason they're all liquor related, because these guys have huge budgets. You look at all the, look at all the umbrellas as you drive around Stratford. They're all of liquor companies on them. Liquor company will sponsor a movie screen for a movie night. We did Jaws at the Beach last year, right? All socially distanced during those things, playing by the rules. And that probably cost them $2,000. We had to buy $300 worth of Prosecco, you know, which we didn't even sell at the event. We sold it, you know, throughout the rest of, the rest of the week. So Commissioner Francis, if economics, you know, don't make sense, we won't do it. We're, we're not trying to lose money to just have some kind of fun thing. I mean, we're a little bit past that, you know what I mean? So hopefully that answers your question. I think I may have gone off topic here.
Well, no worries. All right, so additions to that, my concern is also, from your, your display, you don't really show the aspects of the residents that live around that area. So I took it upon myself to actually Google map the area with the residents, which I will give to you, Chairman. If you really look at this, this layout and what you want to do, which does not really describe the area in Lordship, you have multiple residents, right even right behind the parking lot and in the corner. There's multiple residents there. And as a promoter, I know there will be bleed volume coming from those back speakers, whether you point it to the sound or not.
Then, then we'll stop.
So, so, but it's, it's going, it's going to affect those residents.
Sure.
So if they're coming home, you don't know what shift they work. If they're coming home at, at eight or at seven, that event is still on live. What if they want to just go to sleep? How would you deter from, from disrupting their quality of life?
We stipulate it. I mean, it's, you know, tell me when you want to stop music. I'll stop it then. I mean, you know, late, late at night, it, it doesn't, you know, I'm not trying to make anybody stay awake late at night. I was there today. There was music playing in the neighborhood. It wasn't from us, right? So I mean, the time for music is when it's light out and people are out enjoying themselves on a late summer evening or a, a nice fall afternoon. That's the time for music. So I've asked for music later on the weekends just because, hey, you know what? Ask for it, you know, you can all say no, and I'd be like, okay, you know, we just won't do it. But how would I, how would I work with the neighbors? I've been in touch with several of the neighbors, you know? One is a restaurant who's, who is having music, so I don't think he should have a problem with anything I would do. But I wouldn't have music on the same days he has music. There's no sense in having some sort of battle of the bands down there. Now, that would require coordination, but I'll tell you this. I talked to a musician that plays at his place, and I said, hey, you know what? Why don't you just play on the corner and point the speaker over my way? And that way, he can pay for the musician and I can have my guests enjoy the, enjoy the music. I'd rather do that, Commissioner Francis, because that's better for our economics than paying some guy $300 to sing The Wreck of the Edmund Fitzgerald. It's a weird song if you've ever heard it. So how would I talk to the neighbors? I've spoken to one of the neighbors who's directly, I've spoken, well, I've spoken, you know, to one of the neighbors who is directly behind us. And, you know, I've reached out to everybody else on that street numerous times, saying, look, talk to me, tell me what your problems are, tell me what your concerns are, and let's address them. I'll tell you this, if it becomes, if the bleed back becomes a problem, we'll, we'll just unplug the amps, you know what I mean? We'll have an acoustic, he'll just have to sing louder. That's all it is, you know what I mean? It's, it's not like I am dyed in the wool, like I need some sort of rock band there. I don't. It would just be nice to have, you know, some entertainment down there so we could have some events, you know, and there's some guy playing guitar. You know, you wouldn't hear it if he's back here, so it does require some amplification. But how much it requires, I don't know. I mean, we'll have to see. And if it doesn't work, we'll go to Plan B, you know?
Yeah, and I'm not for or against you, but I just want to give you the opportunity to ask, answer some of these hard questions.
Yeah, I hope that answers your question. If you, I mean, I, I used to be a sound engineer, so you were a promoter. I mean, we won't be pumping the bass, you know what I mean? So you're not going to get that, that reverberation and all that stuff.
It's hard to delegate that.
What's that?
It's hard to delegate that.
No, I understand that, but I mean, most guys are acoustic guitars. It's mid-range. And you know what? It kind of drifts off into the wind, especially if you point it the right direction. We had a band there last year, a country band, Boondocks. They weren't very good. But the, the speakers were pointed over towards the hotel. And a neighbor came over and she said, Doug, this is creating this huge echo. And I was like, holy cow, I didn't even notice that. And as soon as we turned them, you know, south, southwest, the whole thing disappeared. So, and that, I think that band was like from four to, four to seven or something like that. So I don't want to cape anybody up working for their shifts. I don't want to, you know, you know, bother anybody, you know? We're just there trying to, you know, share a beautiful location with, you know, with people. And you know what? People enjoy entertainment, you know? And whether it is a guy playing guitar or a guy reciting Shakespeare or a magician doing card tricks, you can't do any of that stuff unless you have an entertainment permit, you know? So maybe you want to come to a magic show, you know what I mean? I'd like to be able to have a magic show down there, so.
All right, I'll give somebody else an opportunity.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from members? Commissioner Vigliotti, good evening, sir.
Hi, I, I, I have a couple of questions about your proposal or the proposed food service. So, so you have a couple of different proposals for food and serving food. So one of the things that you mentioned was, I guess, having the food prepared at the restaurant and then brought across the street.
Right.
Okay, so one of the concerns I have is that there's not a crosswalk that goes all the way across Washington Parkway. So, you know, have you kind of done a traffic study for something like that or made a request to, to get that addressed?
I, I don't want to do that. I'd rather prepare food on site. And we would have been doing it this summer, but maybe you've read about the restaurant staffing shortage. So we just have not been able, I've been having a hard time keeping a lid on the cooks that we have at our operating places. The intent is to operate it on site like a lobster shack. We would have had lobster rolls there this summer. It's just lobster is crazy, you know, cold lobster rolls. But now we have a grill over there and I just hired a guy that, that can go over there and work. So that's why the beverage service is there too, so that, you know, people can grab food and come over. And as long as they have food, they can get, they can get alcohol to go. That's still going to be a law for the next three years, according to Governor Lamont. So it's a lot easier to get your food and then pick up your beverage, whether it's water or, or beer or, you know, Pepsi or iced tea, instead of walking across the street with that. So I've thought a lot about that. You know, right now, what happens is if somebody orders to go at the, at the table, one of our food runners will bring it across, deliver it, you know, by themselves. I suppose I could put him in a car, have him drive around, deliver it, and drive around again. But in practical terms, how long would that last? So I've thought about it, but it's, it's not a very, there is one crosswalk that gets to the median. You know, maybe we can, I'll pay for it. I'll pay, we'll paint another crosswalk the other way. I mean, that's going to cost, you know, nothing, and if that helps keep people safer, I'm all for it. You could, you can sign me up for that. I'll, I'll paint the crosswalk.
Do you have the infrastructure in place already to do food preparation on site?
On site, yeah. Well, in, in, in the closed container, there's hot water. There is, you know, well, hot water, so you can wash your hands. We do have a grill in the open container. And I mean, we're selling stuff out of there, like chips and, you know, once in a while, there's, there's sandwiches and stuff. But the best thing to do would be to prepare food off-site and bring it there to sell it instead of preparing it on-site. And I'm in the business, so I mean, preparation means I could make a bunch of sandwiches and bring them over there and sell them, or I could bring all the ingredients over there and build them from scratch there. I'd rather make them off-site and bring them over and sell them than, than build them from scratch there. Something like a lobster roll is easy. All you need is hot plate, you know, some lobster, some butter, some rolls and a grill and there you go. Something like a lobster roll is easy, all you need is hot plate, you know, some lobster, some butter, some rolls and a grill, and there you go, all day long. So um, we wouldn't be frying french fries over there, but we, there are certain things that would lend themselves very raw bar, it would be great. You could put things on ice, you show up, you get a plate of oysters, go sit at your picnic table, eat your oysters, you know, have a nice day, and then, you know, go about your business. So um, I would prefer everything over there, that's the, that is the uh, you know, I should have been more specific in the proposal, but I was trying to figure out a way to, not to thread the needle, but look, right now, that's what we're doing. Um, tomorrow night, there'll be a guy cooking hot dogs there, you know, so we'll uh,
Well, how does that work, like, is there, does he use propane, is there a grill?
Yeah, there's there's a, there's a portable grill there, a portable flat top, you know, with a propane tank, it's covered under the thing, we use it at events all the time. He'll go over there, he'll clean it up, the hot dogs will be in the refrigeration in the cart next door, you know, he'll grill some, people will walk up, or they won't. Um, and then they'll uh, they'll get a hot dog. I was there last night, I had an ice cream social again, talking to the neighbors about what's going on, and um, people just walking up getting ice cream. We used, I mean, we used to have ice cream in the lot at the hotel. And we we moved it cuz we thought there was gonna be a traffic issue there, you know, I I was like, this isn't good, it was making me nervous. And we put it across the street, and just based on staffing, we haven't opened it up, but I was there last night for two hours. Um, granted, I was giving ice cream away, cuz it was an ice cream social, and it was come talk to me about what's going on, and um, people just wandering up, you know, this group of, group of kids, you know, they had no idea it was free ice cream, they're like, I'll take chocolate, vanilla, you know, uh, you know, raspberry uh, Italian ice, and they're like, what do we owe you, I was like, hey, it's on the house. So um, then more kids came once that got out, but that was okay. It was just nice to see uh, you know, families out there and and people enjoying themselves on a beautiful night, so.
That's all for me for now, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Henrich.
So um, I I do see that there is a, there is a crosswalk from your property, uh, the restaurant leading over to the parking spaces?
Yeah, I I I don't know if it crosses the street.
It doesn't, it doesn't go across the street, but I wouldn't imagine it would be difficult to have this thing come in and add it or.
I'd, I'd pay for it, I'll do it, give me the paint, yeah.
So just a comment, when the house that, the house up Washington Parkway from you, um, that that abuts your property, I actually framed that house back when Allen's East was up, and I remember the neighbors coming, they didn't like the guy who was the second house back. They didn't like him cuz he built too high of a house.
Yeah.
And they were upset because he stole the view of some other folks. So when when we start, and I wasn't the builder, I was just a framer.
Yeah.
Allen's East was here, we'd go have lunch here all the time. Well, as we were framing the house, all the neighbors came and applauded us because we were blocking the view of the guy who blocked the view with the other people, and they were, they were ecstatic that that we would, they would, that we would give some type of revenge. It was kinda crazy, but.
Karma.
Um, you 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 do have, and if you go around town now, and that's something I'll be bringing up later, if you go around town now, some of the restaurants, uh, because of the, I'm guessing because of the COVID, um, not restrictions, but where COVID's allowed, they've actually moved their outdoor seating all the way out to the parking lot. When I was, when I was on zoning the last term, probably eight years ago, we developed those regulations for outdoor seating. Um, and one of the things I required, and we put in there, and we had some issues with your restaurant before, it was your issue, and they had to comply with it, but was was a five-foot space between the walkway, so if somebody in a wheelchair came up to somebody walking, there would be ample space for those two people to cross. Now, the, so since most of these restaurants now, if you, if if somebody in a wheelchair comes along, they gotta get, go all the way around, use the handicap ramp, go all the way out in the parking lot, and then go all the way around, which is not good, so I I'm, I was glad to see that in your proposal, you have that large bit of space there.
Yeah.
Um, but I I had said this before, and I'm I'm a huge fan of of music. Um, I, my daughter plays out a lot, so I see her, I like, I love going to outdoor restaurants, hearing it. One of the biggest issues I have with acoustic music is typically the 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 people noise.
Yeah.
It's so loud you can't hear the acoustic music, you know? Um, you know, and I don't know if if Riley's is an issue, the, I I love sitting outside at Riley's too, but the outdoor seating at Riley's is the the verbal noise and the clatter of of normal day-to-day business creates an issue. And if the guy who took a dump in somebody's yard was coming from Riley's or the seawall after fishing, I I don't know if he left the sign, just left.
I don't know.
Or they saw. But um, but my my issues with with some of the things that you're proposing are volume, quality of life for the neighbors and and volume, so having a musician, and and if you have Shakespeare, I ain't coming, but um, but some people will, and I don't know if you're aware, but that's a huge thing here in Stratford, so. Um, but that type of thing, you know, to me is acceptable, acoustic music acceptable, you you've looked like you've done some things to, or you will try to, but amplified music in a in a neighborhood setting like that. Joey sees, I know we used to get a lot of complaints from the, from the people at the docks, and then the people across the river, we weren't as concerned about the folks in Milford as we were people on docks, but we allowed them, you know, work, but the amplified music is loud. Um, and it and it can be an issue, and for me, something like a wedding where you have a hundred guests, or um, an amplified music event where you have a band, to me, would create an issue and and cause quality of life issues that um, I couldn't support, you know, for the neighbors, but if it was something like an acoustic acoustic thing in in an afternoon, or you know, up till eight o'clock on on a weekday, you know, and and you made the efforts, as as you're saying, to do that, I might be able to get behind that. You know, obviously, you're over there now, you have people, you have people there, I don't know if we've had any police complaints, any uh, any neighbors, I don't know that your outdoor seating is any louder than Riley's, or the old Marnix, or whatever it was that was the outdoor seating there, prior to you guys owning it.
Yeah.
Because Marnix was there, and it was outdoor seating, and they actually were allowed to go down on the sidewalk and a little bit out onto the beach, but so I don't know, so so for me, it's, it's not necessarily all the bits and pieces, it's the noise that will come from it, and for me, that would need to be addressed, so that the quality, there's always gonna be crowds now, and and if 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 that area of town wasn't such a beautiful piece of, piece of property and a beautiful place to go, we wouldn't have crowds.
Yeah.
You know, if Riley's wasn't there, if you guys weren't there, if the beach wasn't there, if the seawall was there, we wouldn't have crowds. We have crowds cuz it's an awesome place to go and sit and, you know, what, feel the breeze and, you know, whether you had a restaurant, whatever it is. But it's great, the Stratford is popular places, but but addressing, and so that, that's, that's, we're never gonna deal with that. You know, unless we shut down the restaurants and turn it into, you know, vacant land, and then nobody wants that either, so. But but the noise, so.
Yeah, so the noise, um, like I, like I, like I I told Commissioner Francis, if it's a problem, we just won't do it. You know, but I don't know what, I don't know what's going to be a problem, so um, you know, I I could go there and play a guitar and be like, okay, you know, how loud is it? And you know, it it's funny, uh, you know, one of the neighbors I was talking to, um, there was a jazz trio in front of the deli on Sunday, and one of the first things he told me was the decibel level, and I was like, great, I mean, but that's the thing, I mean, everyone's hypersensitive to the decibel level. I mean, it's just, I'm hypersensitive to it too, right? I mean, I uh, you know, we come in peace, we mean no harm, we're trying to make a nice place for everybody, visitors and residents, you know? Um, visitors seem to like it, I got a feeling in my heart of hearts, the residents that don't like it will come around, or, you know, be like, oh, boy, boy, what were we worried about? You know, you could worry about aliens invading, you know, just because they haven't invaded, doesn't mean they're not up there looking at us, ready to invade, I mean, I could worry about all sorts of stuff that wouldn't happen. I saw Jaws in nineteen seventy-seven as a kid, I couldn't swim in a pool, I still can't, I think, you know, I'm gonna turn around, there's gonna be the the shark there, so fear is the most powerful emotion there is, right? And fear is also irrational, most of the time, it's based on biases of, hey, you know, this is what might happen, they might bring that type of person down here. I got an email from a woman today off of Nextdoor. Oh my god, what a toxic waste dump that site is, but she sent me an email, and she, I I had sent her a copy of the plan you all have today, cuz she reached out saying, I don't support this, and I was like, I'm sorry you feel that way, please look at my plan, and then if you have any questions, happy to discuss with you. And she sent me back an email, wondering if I was going to have metal detectors, because these people are carrying, and you know, what's going on, I'm like, you didn't read a thing that I sent you, and your fear is that there's gonna be people down there with guns? I was like, I got news for you, probably half of the homes in Lordship have guns, you know, so, you know, the people are not gonna come down here with guns, they're uh, you know, coming down here to have a lobster roll and a and a Pepsi. So it's that sort of mindset, which is unfortunately permeated everybody, everyone's scared of the unknown. Um, the aliens might shoot down tonight, I don't know, but we're here just to, you know, have a nice time, run a nice business, and enjoy a beautiful piece of 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 the country, of 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 Stratford down there, and make it available for everybody. Because the other thing I hear a lot of, I mean, look, you wanna shut the businesses down, there are some people that wanna put, would love to put gates up on Lordship and keep everybody out. And unfortunately, we, you know, fortunately, we can't do that, so let's find a way to get along. Noise, I won't make a lot, I promise.
Do you know, I mean, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but um, on weeknights down at Paradise Green, they have amplified bands, you know, we get probably a couple hundred people there, do you know how they deal with the neighbors when they do that, how they deal with the sound? I mean, I've 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 been walking and driving by, I know that, I don't find the music offensive, but um.
I I I I don't know, I don't have a decibel meter, I don't, I, but I'll I'll go check it out, if someone's doing it successfully, I'll I'll do it. And if we can't do it successfully, we won't do it. I mean, that's that's my promise, and you can stipulate that, and you know, come down to me like a ton of bricks if I if I break that promise.
And I'm not saying I'd be in favor of mimicking what they're doing down at Paradise Green, and and I think it's a town-run event anyway, but um, that's a, that's a residential area, and and it's it's a ton of fun, and I think the neighbors, I know the residents, uh, they come down, but I'd just be curious if you had any insight on how they.
I I I'll have to go check it out some.
But and again, I wouldn't be in favor of you mimicking that.
I won't, I won't mimic it, I'll just go check it out, cuz it sounds like it's fun, and what's wrong with a little fun, right? So, this is fun, not really, but it is, yeah.
Commissioner Manos, you wanna, you have any questions? No, okay. All right, a couple of questions that I have. First of all, I will, I will compliment you, um, much better presentation, this is better than last month.
I learned from watching Barry too, yeah.
Barry spends a lot of time here, so yeah, he is sort of the uh, the authority, so I I thank you for the diligence that you did in presenting a much more comprehensive report, so thank you very much. Um, so let me understand a couple of things about the food service and um, the food and drink service on the property, let's start with that. So um, it says food service would be a continuation of Little Pub Dining in a to-go method with onsite beverage service and ice cream snack bar offerings. Hot food orders will be taken by servers and sent directly to the Little Pub kitchen uh, via QR code, and guess what, enjoy the meals delivered to their tables in a to-go fashion, so as I understand it here, um, when you say uh, snack bar offering, so you're considering doing hot food preparation on the site, is that correct?
Correct, correct, yeah.
Um, there was a comment in the uh, the health director's comments, I'm not sure if you've been in receipt of those, that says that any of that type of food preparation might require additional licensing.
I wouldn't be surprised, yes, and we we work with them whenever, whenever necessary, yeah.
Okay, now with regards to uh, beverage service, and let's talk specifically um, alcohol, and I and I realize, and maybe our our town attorney could could help me through here, the laws have, are in a still a little bit of a state of flux, since there's the executive orders that are supposed to cover. I was unaware that they have a three-year duration, I thought that was just the, to the point where they expire, but if, I I I don't know if maybe whoever, somebody, I would appreciate some clarification as to how far that extends. In addition, what I'm curious about is, does your current liquor license, is it limited to your, to the uh, Little Pub Restaurant facility? Or does it account for the adjoining property that is in question tonight?
What would end up, what, right now, under seven M, we can operate with our liquor permit across the street. Um, when we went to a permanent zoning, we would apply for a separate liquor permit, because the idea would be that you uh, right now, when, if you, if you get um, something to, alcoholic to drink over there, you can get a Pepsi, get whatever you want, and and you can drink those all day long. But if you want a beer, you have to have food with it. And so um, that is what has been extended until twenty twenty-four. To-go alcohol, so you can't go to a restaurant and be like, give me a six-pack of Budweiser.
Correct.
You have to get a um, a pizza, and then you can get a six-pack of Budweiser. Which which, you know, really made the liquor stores angry, but you know, for restaurant owners, you know, hey, why not, you know, so? Um, and for consumers, it's a good convenience, so Lamont has extended that through twenty twenty-four. Um, and who knows, that may be a permanent thing, I think they'll see it doesn't do a lot of harm. So, in other words, um, if you came to the restaurant and got to-go food, you just came in, and said, give me a burger, and I'll take a couple um, I'll take a couple of line in Googles, cuz those are fun to say. Um, and then you walked across the street, you're perfectly fine. Um, if you come to the container, you know, when like cornhole's going on, and you want to have a beer, you have to buy food. So it it gets a little convoluted, you can walk into the restaurant and just get a drink, but you can't get a drink to go unless you're ordering food. And you can't go to a seven M, you know, extended outdoor dining facility and get a drink without getting food. So I mean, it is, it's a lot to handle, but um, we uh, we uh, you know, we 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 handle it, I mean, we just, that's, you know.
More specifically, so that, at the time you got your liquor permit, you did not own the subject property, you were just exclusively at the restaurant, is that true?
That's correct, yes.
So then they are saying, considering that this is in fact a separate lot.
Yes.
Even though it's owned cooperatively, it's a separate lot. So you're saying that the the liquor permit now extends to this lot?
Only during, please, only during seven double M.
Only during seven double M?
And that that was, that, our operation over there was approved by the Health Department, the Zoning Department, the Police Department, the Fire Department. Um, anything we've done over there has been with the appropriate department, the 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 containers were anchored to the ground at the direction of the Building Department. Um, so we've had everybody over there, everybody's fully aware, and I have all the signatures, and there's a permit in the container, so um, people may not like that, but that's what we're legally able to do right now under seven M. Um, and seven M goes until March of twenty twenty-two, I believe. Unless we get a Delta spike, and Lamont might say, hey, you know what, this is a good idea, we'll keep going. But I don't wanna run a business based on COVID, uh, you know, uh, you know, regulations, and yeah, I mean, it's just like, I need some certainty in my life, you know, so I'd like to know what I'm, what I'm doing, and uh, please, you'll have a chance. Um, you know, uh.
Mr. McUnus, could we have order in the chamber, please, I'm talking to the applicant, I'd like to be able to finish this dialogue and answer my questions, proceed, sir.
I lost my place, but um, I'd like certainty, I'd like to operate under there under its own steam, so I don't have to rely on you know, hard-to-understand government mandates and um, you know, any sort of misconception or, you know, you know, questioning of what it is we're doing over there.
Now, uh, in regards to seating, um, I wanted to talk about that, in your facilities plan, we have twenty-four removable picnic tables, average occupancy of three persons for um, and and so on. Um, do you envision ever having a situation where it would be, bring your own chairs, or what was commonly known in the day as festival seating, where it's standing room crowd?
One, I I can think of one instance where that might occur, if we do a movie night, and people were coming down with their beach chairs to 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 watch a movie. Um, we would, we would move the 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 chairs to the side so they could sit down and and watch a movie. But um, we would, you know, we could say, hey, look, you just gotta keep the seating the same, right? So you can't have two hundred people there, you gotta keep, you know, you know, seventy-two or ninety-six, which is plenty of people to watch a beach movie, I mean, you know, it's, it's, you know. So we'll work with whatever parameters there are, I mean, I'm, I'll, you tell me, hey, Doug, you got ninety-six seats, great, I'm gonna ninety-six seats.
So if you had a entertainment, and I know you spoke about the definitions of that, and you gave a couple of examples. Um, would you typically uh, do it as sort of a um, on a ticketed basis, like an Eventbrite thing, where at a certain point you would stop capacity to make sure that you didn't have a a blowout crowd that showed up for something?
Um, I I suppose, we've never done that before, uh, you know, mostly it's atmospheric, you got some guy, you know, plunking away on a guitar, and you know, you can't hear him cuz the people are talking, and you know, it's just atmospheric, you know, so um, we don't sell tickets for that. Um, when we've had other bands in there, we never charged a cover for it, you know?
Well, not necessarily a charge, I'm just saying so that you have, you would know exactly to manage your crowd size, and if somebody says, oh, guess what, it's sold out, I can't go. They're not gonna make the trip down and be disappointed, and then try to hang in there and fit in someplace.
Gotcha, okay, so uh, we we have not historically done that, we certainly could, cuz we do that with the other events there, like the Bubbles and Brunch, you know, where people came down. came down and did a Mother's Day bouquet and had some Prosecco. There was only 50 seats available for that. The cornhole is, the cornhole tournament is, I think it's like 12 teams, or, I mean, so, you know, there are limits to things. It would certainly be, you know, easy for us to say, hey, we're having, you know, the Rolling Stones down here, and we only have 50 tickets, but they're $500,000 apiece, but you know what, we might sell them. I mean, that's a horrible joke, because everyone's going to take that seriously, but we could, we could certainly, we could certainly restrict admission, and it's easy to do, especially in today's days.
Technological world, all sorts of things are possible.
Everything is possible, everything is possible.
I think that's got most of mine, most of the other commissioners caught some of the things that I wanted to ask. So, last chance, any members? Okay. So, what we're going to do now is, we'll go into the public comment phase, and you will get a chance to do a rebuttal at the end, so stay tuned.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, earlier, earlier before, and I'm sure not everybody was aware of it, there actually was a small signup sheet, so there's a number of names, I'm going to go through them, when I'm done with them, then it'll be, you know, raise your hand, and I'll call you up individually, just to keep things moving a little orderly. So, the first name on the list is David Driscoll. And everybody just give your name and address so that we know who you are for the record. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening. My name's David Driscoll, I live at 59 Jefferson Street in the Lordship area. I prepared some remarks, which I'm going to go through quickly, but I, I want to respond to a couple things Mr. Graves just said, that weren't necessarily in his plan that was posted on the site. There was no mention anywhere in the plan of his intentions for future liquor sales. If he's got a popular band down there that stops playing music at 10 o'clock if you approve his permit, there's no saying that the 200 people that are on the property are going to go home at 10 o'clock. They're going to be there until the bar closes, and if he gets a liquor permit, it's likely the bar will close at 1:00. So, that's just one comment. The second comment is, I'm not scared of the unknown. I know what's going on down there. Last year, there were a number of bands that Mr. Graves brought on to the public sidewalk, playing music onto the old Marnix Beach. I, for one, called the police because of the noise, so when Mr. Graves says nobody ever called the police, that's not factually correct. The last meeting, I put into an exhibit that showed a picture of a large crowd on the seawall and on the beach during one of the events. I took the liberty today of providing a, two exhibits, they're actually, the website of two bands. Mr. Graves would like you to believe that he's going to have some guy, as he says, plunking on a guitar with acoustic music. Tangled Vine has been scheduled this year, Green-Eyed Lady played this year. These are out of their website, you can see they're popular rock and roll bands that are going to attract more than the 74 people that might be sitting at the picnic table, and I'm thinking there's going to be a lot of people standing around. So anyways, some facts. One other, one other point. The noise mitigation that Mr. Graves speaks of hanging up a sound cloaking device or whatever, and pointing to music to the southwest, if you Google the prevailing wind direction in Western Long Island sound, it will tell you that from May through August, the prevailing wind direction is south to southwest, which means as he's trying to send his music over the sound, the wind coming from the south and southwest are going to take that noise right back into the neighborhood of Lordship. Okay, so some facts. Beachbound Properties purchased a residential lot on the corner of Beach Drive and Washington Parkway in an RS4 district on April 19th, 2020. The property was and always has been a residential property. The property is located in the coastal management areas defined by Chapter 444 of the Connecticut General Statutes, which sets requirements for this area. Within the blocks surrounding this subject property, we have residents that include the elderly, children, young children, and people who are fighting serious illness, and were asking to allow music seven days a week in their backyard. So, in July of last year, the Planning Commission voted against a petition for waterfront zone for that property, and they cited safety concerns, traffic issues, and limited parking that would prohibit resident access to the waterfront. On July 22nd, this commission last year approved the petition to convert the WF zone without a plan being presented. And I recall at that meeting, and in the minutes, it said that traffic and safety issues would be addressed when a plan was brought forward, and that nothing could happen on that property until a plan was brought forward. Yet, there's an awful lot been going on down there this year, and there's nothing been approved by the zoning commission. Okay? On July 14th this year, the Waterfront Harbor Management, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Silhavy, you indicated in that previous meeting that we're, the waterfront zone is one of the most restrictive zones, and that there were a number of things that put a very high threshold to approve any use under this zone. So, I would just want us to remember that. So, the Waterfront Harbor Management Commission, on the 14th of July, did not make a favorable recommendation due to concerns regarding the potential impact of the proposed use. Specific concerns noted were potential noise and other nuisance impacts, adequacy of available parking to support patrons, traffic congestion, diminishing availability of parking in the seawall for the general public. They found the proposed project is inconsistent with the quality of life and public access provisions of the harbor management plan. So, I went online, and I printed down all the information that Mr. Graves posted after the last meeting so we could understand what, what he intends to do. And a decision to approve or disapprove this petition should be governed by the Stratford zoning regulations in alignment with the Town of Stratford Plan of Conservation Development, Connecticut General Statute, Chapter 444, and the Stratford Harbor Management Plan, and I know that's your charter. I've reviewed his plan against the requirements for the waterfront district, and in summary, this plan is not a water-dependent use, and it falls far short of the parking requirements. I reached this determination as follows. Connecticut General Statutes in Section 3 and 8 of the zoning regulations established the requirements for development coastal management area. It requires the development in a WF district must be a water-dependent use. In Platypus Partners CAM application, Platypus's response to the question, is the project a water-dependent use as defined in Section 316 of Connecticut General Statute 22A-93, the answer was no, it's not a water-dependent use, and that was their application. The project presented does not meet the definitions of a marine use as defined by Paragraph 8.2.1 of the Stratford zoning regulations. Non-marine use is permitted by Paragraph 8.2.2, restaurants and retail service establishments, only as part of a mixed-use project. I don't believe this is a restaurant, but if somebody wants to look at it, wait. The zoning regulations in Section 8 define a mixed, mixed, oh, excuse me, mixed-use project as one in which the marine use component requires a greater number of parking spaces than the non-marine use. So, mixed use in this area requires a predominantly marine-type project. If Platypus is presenting the project as a restaurant, it must also, by the zoning requirements in Paragraph 3.1.1.3, two additional amenities, I think there are six or seven amenities listed in that, in that paragraph, which, looking at his proposal, he does not. Okay? And so, as you go through those regulations, if it's not a water-dependent use, and it's not a restaurant that has the two amenities, then it would be considered a prohibited use per Paragraph 8.2.3 of the zoning regulations. And then on Paragraph 8.4, requires that architectural plans be prepared by a professional architect and must address the relationship of the development to the waterfront as viewed from the water and adjacent public streets, and site design linkage between the proposed development and the surrounding neighborhood. No such plan is part of this application. Paragraph 8.4 also provides that the zoning commission shall review each site design to ensure sufficient level of upland support facilities, one of which is parking. So, parking requirements are established in Section 12 of the zoning regulations, and it says, I quote, "They shall be sufficient to accommodate the motor and other vehicles of all occupants, employees, customers, and other persons normally visiting such buildings at any one time," buildings or a lot at any one time. Paragraph 12.5.5 sets the requirements for auditoriums, theaters, and assembly halls of one space for every four seats or for each 200 square feet, whichever is greater. Calculating using the seats method is impossible because of the large gathering area between the picnic tables and the containers, which would potentially be occupied by standing, standing patrons. So, using the square foot method, if you assume that a third of his 27,974 square foot lot is dedicated to the 29 cars parking, you're left with approximately 18,000-plus square feet of property to be occupied by patrons listening to one of these bands that he brings in. If you use the 200-square-foot calculation, his required parking would be 94 parking places, not 29. Okay? So, in closing, the Planning Commission's already ruled that this site shouldn't have been commercially developed because of the limitations of the site. The Waterfront Harbor Management Commission have assessed the specific plan is in conflict with the harbor management plan. If this commission performs an objective assessments of Platypus Partners' proposed use against the requirements of the zoning regulation, it would be impossible to approve this petition as presented. One last point. The Waterfront Harbor Management Commission pointed to the potential of nuisance noise to disrupt the quality of life in the neighborhood. I ask you to consider the fact that your zoning regulations, Paragraph 3.17, prohibit me in a residential area from having a loudspeaker at my pool that can be heard beyond my property line. That's in your regulations. Yet, you're considering an application for amplified music in an area surrounded by residential neighborhoods. Seems a little bit inconsistent, doesn't it? Thank you.
The next speaker is Gary Nelson.
Hi. My name's Gary Nelson, I live at 76 West Hillside Avenue. Let me start by stating that I am not anti-Little Pub. Little Pub has been a fine addition to the seawall. The quality of the food is good, prices are reasonable, the ambiance is excellent. What I am opposed to is the application by Platypus Corporation to create a freestanding outdoor music venue. I would like you to envision what this would look like located at the corner lot across from the seawall. Large crowds with no ability for crowd control because of the open space involved and the lack of barriers. Crowds spilling over and across the street to the actual seawall. Ironically, much of that crowd will not be patrons of Little Pub, but rather people hanging out, bringing alcohol from home, and smoking pot, which I can remind you is now legal in Connecticut. Traffic congestion with cars attempting to drive onto Beach Drive, inability of pedestrians to walk on the sidewalk, walk their dogs, stroll with their infants, enjoy the view, or watch the sunset. The Little Pub on their website says they want the seawall for all, but in reality, they want the seawall for the Little Pub. I am a nurse, where I spent the majority of my 45-year nursing career working in the emergency department. I have personally witnessed countless examples where crowds plus alcohol plus drugs equal a recipe for disaster. I won't take your time detailing the many tragedies which I have witnessed over the years as a result of this combination. There's a famous quote, and I quote, "Those that fail to learn from history are doomed to repeat it." We can cite many examples from history of crowds and alcohol and drugs leading to these disasters. However, we need to look no farther than the recent crowd control incident at Harborside right here in Stratford. The proposal to rename the lot Seawall Park brings to mind Seaside Park and the infamous Gathering of the Vibes. Who will police it? What is the town's liability? In closing, I would ask you to vote on behalf of the grandparents who are strolling with their grandchildren, the young parents walking with their small children, the teenagers riding their bikes, runners, walkers, senior citizens, nature lovers, and all those who would like to use the seawall without having to navigate through the crowds of individuals who, as we say in the hospital, earn an altered mental status. I fear, I fear that if this proposal is passed, you will look back at some point in the near future with regret about this decision. Thank you.
Ann Ferris?
Thank you. Several weeks ago, I spoke to the Waterfront Harbor Management Commission, so some of my remarks tonight will be duplicated but are certainly necessary to repeat. I am probably the only one in this chamber that has lived in the same house directly across from the seawall and the beach park for 45 years. I own the sign of the Gull Restaurant, formerly named Skipper's in the early 80s, and sold it to the Ucelini family, and was renamed Allen's East. So, I have seen a lot of changes throughout the years, and we know that we are living in a period of change, not only in Lordship but around the country. We need controls along with all of this change. I have a folder with emails that I sent to town officials in the 70s. Today, I could just change the names and resend them. We also had a small group of neighbors and began the Seawall Association. I have an agenda from that period of time, and the date was 5/24/06, the time 7:00. Our guest that evening was Michael Julian, and he was our first district council person. Our discussion items were: frequency of rubbish pickup at the seawall, health issues concerning rats and cats, enforcement of police of 10:00 PM seawall parking, weekend police patrol, inappropriate sexual behavior in and outside of parked cars, control auto speed by installing speed bumps, restrict seawall parking to town residents' auto stickers, autos and vans using Washington Parkway and seawall area for day and overnight parking, and install new no-parking and one-way signs, and the maintenance of existing "Welcome to Lordship" sign on Washington Parkway. The rules were there for all to see. Some of our major issues are, to name only a few. Traffic, and a lot of it, cars driving the wrong, wrong way on many of our streets. We need a traffic and parking study done in this very congested area. I can't imagine waitstaff trying to cross Washington Parkway with food in hand for customers seated at the seawall park, waiting for their food. Incoming cars are trying to park on crowded Washington Parkway and in the Little Pub two lots. Drivers are looking around to find a parking spot, hardly paying attention to any waitstaff ready to cross the street. Beach Drive is also packed with cars and people, another accident waiting to happen. Speeding cars and motorcycles, not only in the seawall area, but all through Lordship. Excessive noise, boom boxes during the night and day, and now big bands are being scheduled even without a town permit. When I own the sign of the Gull Restaurant, in that same location, there was a town ordinance and was told there could be no outside music. That has disappeared. If so, how has it changed? By whom and when? Alcohol. Many people are walking across the street with drink in hand after purchasing it from a restaurant or bringing it in the trunk of their cars. Open drinking is everywhere, outside, the two restaurants, in the street, on the beach, and the seawall, which the Town of Stratford owns. Is the owner of the Little Pub licensed to sell alcohol in the seawall park? If not, who is? Scooters are found everywhere, just left and dropped on the ground and in the streets, just waiting for another accident to happen. Trash, all over the area for neighbors in town to pick up. Even rats are now seen, and in past years, traps have been used to rectify this very unhealthy situation. There was a large beautiful sign at the end of Washington Parkway stating, "Welcome..." There was a large beautiful sign at the end of Washington Parkway stating "Welcome to Lordship Beach." Also printed on the sign were the rules of the beach: no dogs, loitering, alcohol, fishing, littering. Where is this sign, and why wasn't it replaced immediately? And believe me, we all tried. Where are these rules for the two other beaches? And there is no one rule for the two beaches in Lordship. Where is it certainly not congested? I have a picture of the sign and will include it with remarks to the commission that you have. Rules must be enforced; they're necessary for control. This area is wide open with no controls. Many cars and people who want to enter this already congested area are allowed. Parking may be the only limitation, but there is really no effective way to limit or control this unsafe situation. How many extra police will be needed just to keep order? And the town liability might go to an all-time high. We can ask ourselves, what benefit does the town of Stratford and its residents receive? And we can answer that. More issues for Public Works, police, and the Health Department, and a greater cost to the homeowner. The resources of the town will certainly be stressed. The question remains, are we losing our neighborhood? All of this change seems like a very large plan for a very small part of Lordship. Our town officials have helped painting a pedestrian walkway, one-way arrows on some streets, and parking on half of the seawall for Stratford residents only. But we need everyone to help keep the quality of life that we all deserve. The area with its changes through the years is our little piece of heaven, and right now, our personal enjoyment of the natural beauty is being destroyed. In closing, the Lordship Improvement Association sent a letter to the town officials on June 22nd expressing their concern for certain issues that have been mentioned tonight. I hope the LIA with its mission statement that states, "We shall endeavor to preserve and enhance the original quality of life and character of the Lordship waterfront community and improve the quality of life for all residents of Lordship," I hope that we'll stand by their statement. We need our entire community to help to save this special part of Lordship so that all of us have the quality of life we deserve and pay for. Why should some Stratford residents' quality of life be in jeopardy? Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Ed Kingston.
I was here last month to talk about the Little Pub, and as people here probably know, I do favor what they're doing down here, and I just wanted to go over some of the things that were talked about today. Number one, I want to talk about the--
Do you have the microphone?
Sure, is that better?
Yes.
Excellent. I want to talk about the issues. I know you're going to hear, you've already heard it, and I'm sure you're going to hear it a number of other times, the different issues that keep coming up. I also want to talk a little bit about, and you're not going to hear a lot of this tonight, about the positive impact that Little Pub has had on our community. And there's a lot. There's a lot of great stuff that they have done. I also want to talk a little bit about the importance of music in Lordship, right? Because, well, I guess you could laugh about that, but I was at the Blues at the Beach, right? We had, you know, a New Orleans jazz trio just show up at the marketplace. Seems to me it's pretty important to us here in Lordship. I know it's important to me in my life. I also want to talk about consistent and fair implementation of zoning. That is, you know, holding one person to one standard and allowing others to do other things throughout our community in Lordship and through all of Stratford. And then I want to talk about what we have in terms of our zoning laws for live music today or for music outside, because maybe it's time that we change that. So let's talk about these issues. Number one, parking. When it comes to parking, they're proposing 30 new spaces. He's just committed, I think I heard this correctly, that he was going to limit the seating to 96 people. That's far better than any of the standards that we have in our zoning right now in terms of the number of parking spaces for patrons in a restaurant. Seems to me he's doing us a very big favor. I think one of the things that we did that was not a good favor was when we took all those parking spaces and made them Stratford-only. I go down to the seawall all the time. I live very, very close, 8 Shoreline Drive. I can throw a rock and hit Little Pub-- I wouldn't do it, do it. I won't. But I could throw a rock and hit his place. I'm down there all the time, and I can tell you, on Friday and Saturday nights, the busiest times, the only spaces that are available are the spaces that are reserved for Stratford residents. And what's happening is the people who are not from Stratford are starting to get creative with their parking, right? Because we only have the spaces reserved for those people on parts of Washington Parkway, parts of Hillside Ave, and parts of First Avenue, all right? And so people are starting to park farther out. I think we've kind of created our own problem there, and we owe it to the people of Lordship to do a study on parking and to get that solved once and for all. But that's not a problem that the gentleman behind me created. Trash. Everyone talks about trash all over the place. I'm sorry, I'm there all the time. I leave my house first thing in the morning, take my dog Roscoe, big dog, for a nice walk through the seawall. I don't find one lick of trash at Little Pub. That place is immaculate. It is immaculate. When I walk along the seawall-- I was quiet for you, please. I was quiet--
Folks, please, let the gentleman continue, please.
You know, I'm kind of new to Lordship. I'm kind of new to Lordship, but where I come from, people weren't rude like that. You know, some people have different views. I have a different view. I have different values. And when it comes to, you know, enjoyment out of where I live, maybe it's different than yours. Okay, but let's not be rude to each other. When I walk through the seawall, there are days that the trash is full. But I can tell you, the DPW, the Department of Public Works, does a pretty good job. And I can also tell you each of their first names, because I always say hello to those guys, because I'm like, thanks for picking up the trash, all right? And they do a great job with that. And then if you stop to think about what Little Pub is saying, what they're doing is they're putting some outdoor dining out there, they're going to run their stuff over, and I can tell you that sometimes I can't get a reservation over at Little Pub because it's full. I can't get a reservation at Riley's. Is Rich still here? Rich? All right? Because they're full. What's going to happen is that place is going to end up being in overflow. People are going to eat there. Where's their trash going to go? Their trash is going to go in the receptacles he's got in that area, right? He's doing us a favor when it comes to trash. Noise. I get it. I understand, and I don't want to be woken up or have things happen all night. But he did not come up here and say he's going to do that seven days a week. He said he's going to do that one day, and at skip at least a day before he does another day. I think that's a really great compromise. He's also signed up to do things by our current noise ordinances. So you know what? You could have a neighbor put a boombox in their backyard, and as long as they're not exceeding that ordinance, that noise ordinance, there's nothing you can do about it, all right? So it's no different than what he is proposing here. Drunken behavior, very serious about this one. I just want to apologize. I'm sorry. No, it wasn't me, all right? I have never seen, nor have I found, a single arrest down at the seawall since I've been there. I walk down there all the time, all day and night. I am never concerned about my well-being. I am never concerned that someone's going to hurt me or I'm in any harm whatsoever. Are there people having a good time? Yes. But most of the time, I'm taking pictures of people because they're posing on the seawall with the moon behind them, all right? It's people having a good time and having fun, all right? I don't see this. And if someone were to relieve themselves on my property, I'd be beyond mad. There's no question about it. But I think, don't think it's happening as much as we're bringing this up or, you know, or anything else. And I'm with you. The person who did that was an absolute buffoon, and we should work with the police department to make sure that does not happen. Again, though, that's nothing that the Little Pub brought on. I don't see anything on their menu telling you, hey, you know, you should go relieve yourself on your neighbors', on our neighbors' properties. Let's talk a little bit about the positive impact of the Little Pub in our community. They renovated and created a beautiful hotel. I walk out my door in the morning, I see people out on the balcony, and they're just having the time of their life, sipping their coffee, looking out at the shore. And as I said, that place is immaculate. They bring good food to the table at a decent price, all right? They provide beach activities, and they participate in charity events. We have cornhole tournament, all right? Personally, I don't get that game, but hey, you know what? A lot of people do. And they have free cornhole things out there on the beach that people can use. We've got beach yoga out there on Saturday mornings. I know because my wife sits out on the porch with her friend and steals the yoga class. They were fantastic during the pandemic. They opened up their place, they turned it into a store. He's reached out to us to not only ask us what we want to do, but then as we complained to him, he still gave us free ice cream. I mean, how can you complain with that? And he's supporting local vendors, musicians, Yoga on the Beach, Yappy Hour, and he's a pretty creative guy. I think he's going to continue to do wonderful things like this in our community. And I know we all laughed at this before, but I really think that music is important to us here at Lordship. I mentioned Blues on the Beach. I mentioned the New Orleans band that popped up over at Market Street. I love to go to Riley's and sit out on his deck and listen to live music. I like to do that at Riggers, too, which does the same thing. As I was driving here, I would buy Acapulco's, you know, on that busy street. I know we're concerned about music and we're concerned about safety. They're right there on the street, music is playing, all right? I love it. I think it's great. I think what the LIA has done with Lordship should be applauded. I think what the Lordship Fathers Association should be applauded. They bring us the music on the bluffs. Fantastic time. No one seems to have a problem with this, all right? Music makes people happy. I know I don't seem happy right now, just because I'm not listening to music, all right? And it really makes and brings us together as a community. And it can be done right, and I believe that Little Pub will. I want to also talk about doing this consistently across our community, all right? I don't know who has permits to play music outside or not, but I can tell you, because I frequent a lot of the bars around here and a lot of the restaurants, and I see live music at these places, and it's outside, all right? And they're in residential areas, and they're in communities, and they're done well. Love music, love to listen to music while I'm having something to eat and having a little something to drink, and I think it can be done, and it can be done responsibly. So just give Little Pub the same opportunity that we seem to be giving all the other places out there that are putting out live music or pumping music outside, which is against our zoning rules. So fair and consistent. I also think we should look at that from a zoning perspective. I'd like to charge you guys with, guys, oh, I'm sorry, guys and gals with that, all right? To come up with a better zoning regulation that allows music. I just think that would be a wonderful thing for us to do here, and we should look at other towns for that. So in conclusion, I want to make sure that the board takes into consideration the opposition to Little Pub and what's really happening down there at the seawall. I think those are two different things. I want you to consider and take into account the wonderful things that Little Pub has done for our community at the seawall, at Lordship, and at Stratford. And I want you to place, I want you to realize that he's willing to put restrictions on this live music and these performances, and I want us to consider being fair and consistent with the way that we're applying our zoning laws here in Stratford. Thank you so much for listening.
Jean Anis? Anis, thanks, sorry about that.
Jean I. 210 First Avenue, lifelong resident of Stratford. I actually have a question. Pardon?
Raise your microphone.
Is that good? I guess so. There you go. Is this okay? I have a question. As we said, this is like Stratford's white buffalo. There's no precedent. Before, there was a structure on the property. It had a footprint, whatever restaurant it was. It used a percentage of that lot. Is there going to be a percentage of that lot that he is going to be allowed to use as the venue/entertainment? I mean, is it going to be 75% of the lot he can use for it? Or is it going to be contained to what size the structure was originally on that lot? Anybody? Town attorney?
Okay, generally--
You can do a better discussion.
What's that?
We can do a better area of discussion.
Okay, just, we'll take your note of your question, and then when we get into the debate, we'll have to be able to put together an answer for that, or the applicant in his rebuttal will be able to respond to that for you.
Thank you.
Again, I'm sorry if I'm with the pronunciations. Teri Ralabate?
Ralabate.
Ralabate, thank you.
It's going to have to come down, obviously. Hi, my name is Teri Ralabate. I've been a resident of Stratford for 40 years. I've been a resident of Lordship for the last four years. In those 40 years, I've had multiple opportunities to come down to Lordship and enjoy the seawall and pretty much just wandering around Lordship. I won't take up a lot of your time, because Mr. Kingston, is it? Basically said a lot of what I wanted to say. I'm totally in support of this proposal because I really do feel that Little Pub has added so much to an area that had gotten, quite frankly, depressed and depressing to look at, all right? I understand that people have concerns, and those concerns are real. But to take those concerns and project them onto one business and one proposal and say that this proposal is going to aggravate all of these concerns beyond control, I think is unreasonable and unfair. I think this commission can certainly help Mr. Graeb come up with a plan, come up with a model that will work to enhance his business and yet keep the residents reasonably happy. They're not, not everybody's going to be totally happy. That's just a given. But here in Stratford, we've had a problem with rising taxes, with lack of certain services and everything else, and the burden has been on the homeowners. We need to develop a business-friendly climate, and it can't all be out on Lordship Boulevard. It can't all be in those sections of town where people don't live. There are going to be businesses within and around our neighborhoods. Where I used to live, there was a big hue and cry about an affordable housing unit that was going up, and people were beside themselves with, again, what they considered very real concerns. The unit went up, and the concerns disappeared because the commission, zoning, planning, everybody else made sure that the concerns of the residents were given, were given an opportunity, they were given an opportunity to express them, and they could live with them. So I'm asking you to please remember that Little Pub has been a phenomenal addition, in my opinion, to Lordship. And it's a community that I've grown to love just in the four years I've lived there, and as I said, I have visited it for over 40 years. I really hope that you will work with him to approve his plan. Thank you.
Jim Ralabate?
My name is Jim Ralabate, and I'm the husband of Teri. I've been in Stratford for 40 years. Apropos to Mr. Nelson, I'm also a physician in the medical field. And I've been in Stratford for so many years and down in Lordship for four years and yet seen one bad accident in Lordship with all the traffic and congestion that we've seen so far. Zero. I want to reiterate what my wife said and make it very brief. I don't know all the zoning ordinances, and I don't pretend to be that. But I think we need to give Little Pub and restaurants like that a chance to let this area grow commercially. It seems like most of the residents that have been here a long, long time are opposed to this. And I have a funny feeling it's because we're changing the nature of their neighborhood. And that's what happens with change. If you want to get businesses into Stratford and you want to be a Stratford-friendly community that allows people to grow with businesses, you have to allow businesses to start. And as long as the zoning commission sets up appropriate guidelines and rules and they follow the laws, then I think Little Pub should be given a chance. He's willing to work with you on every single question you raise to him tonight. He was able to give you an answer, a recommendation, a solution. And I think instead of being so against this whole idea, we need to be working with him. He's even talked to many of the residents in Lordship that were opposed to this idea, and he's given them adequate answers. They may not be happy with it, but when you move to a residential area in a coastal town, Narragansett, Missquomicate, Newport, Cape Cod, down in Florida, I think you have to assume that over time, commercial properties are going to go in there for the betterment of the town. And unfortunately, things are going to change around your neighborhood. That's just the way it is. And I don't know what else to say except that I'm in strong favor of this Little Pub proposal. Thank you.
Will Farmer?
Hi, members of the board, chairman, Mr. Chair. I don't have a lot of prepared statements. Oh, you can't hear me? Hello? Is that better? Hi. Will Farmer, 216 Margarita Lawn. I'm currently a candidate for District One Town Council. I've been listening to a lot of the comments today, hearing a lot of the emotional feelings towards Little Pub expanding at the seawall. I also share some of those concerns. A lot of my concerns are about changing the way the community looks. I don't have the pleasure of living across the street from the seawall, but I do respect my neighbors who live in that area. I share those same fears about the types of people that may overflow into that part of our community. I also share concerns about crime, trash, parking, and noise. I also understand that we have to grow as a community. I am for economic growth and development in Stratford, specifically Lordship, but not at the sacrifice of inconvenience to our neighbors. I've heard the discussion today, and I've listened to the briefing provided by Mr. Gray. And what I hear is a lot of cooperation, putting in controls to make sure that we don't have to, you know, clean up the mess, per se. I'm all for that. I'm a cybersecurity professional by trade, retired Air Force veteran. We had a saying at the Pentagon, "We're not the office of no, we're the office of how." And I think we should keep that in mind, and I think we should hold Mr. Gray accountable. I do believe there's some room for us to grow. I think we should try to find a way to meet in the middle. I don't believe we should look at Mr. Gray as a neighbor. I believe we should look at him as a business. And if we look at him as a business, we can hold him to a higher standard. There's never going to be 100% agreement on this issue. I can respect that. But I do think we do have an opportunity to bring something really beautiful to Lordship. I consider Lordship my little piece of heaven. I've always referred to it as my little piece of heaven. And I feel like this is an opportunity for us to show other people our little piece of heaven within the constraints provided through ordinance. Again, as a District One candidate, this is important to me, and I do want to make sure that we meet in the middle somewhere. Thank you.
Craig Stout?
Hello there. This is my first ever in my life town hall talk. I lived in Redding for 30 years, and if you want quiet, go to Redding. You can hear a tennis ball half a mile down the road. You can hear them playing. I moved here at the age of 71 because I was looking for some more of a neighborhood environment where there were people that I could get to know. And honestly, it's been a fantastic experience. I moved here in November of 2019, so I'm a newbie. I'm not a 10, 20, 30, 40-year-old member of this community. But what I love about it is I can see a 10-year-old boy riding his bike down the street by himself without his parents. It's the way I grew up in Ohio. But I will say that I also moved here because I wanted to have a life where I could exchange not only friendship, but experiences. And I happen to be a music lover myself. I think that, again, I'm not a 40-year-old member here, and I know for those of you that are close to the Little Pub, it might be difficult to accept this kind of change. But I'm a proponent of managed, controlled change. And I think there's an opportunity here. I think the owner of the pub has been reaching out to everyone to get to know them, to share their issues. And from what I understand, and everything I read and hear, he's doing everything possible to make this a positive experience. I too believe that, I liked what he said about fun, and I liked what he said about the experience down there. When I first started looking for a house here, it was probably in the spring of 19. And I'll never forget going to the seawall, and I said to myself, "Do I really want to be here? This is depressing." The restaurant was dark. The lot across the street was deserted. There were piles of, you know, rocks and stones. It just looked awful. It was terrible. I said, "Who would want to move here?" But I did, and I love it, and I'm happy I did, okay? But I'm just trying to say that, you know, we talk about property values. I would think that today's Lordship is infinitely more attractive, the way it is now, than it was in the spring of 2019. And I'm happy for that. I've eaten at The Little Pub many times during COVID. I was a regular there. They brought food out to my car. I didn't have to go in. My two daughters have stayed at the hotel. They loved it. And I think that they've got a lot to offer. I think they're trying very, very hard to work. And I like the thought about the Pentagon, about not being a place to say no, but saying how. And I think we deserve, he deserves us to consider how we're going to make this work because I think he's trying very hard, and I support it very much. Thank you.
Eric Rothstein?
Good evening. Thank you for giving me an opportunity. I just wanted to, my name's Eric Rothstein. I live at Maple Street here in Lordship. I'm here to register my support for the entertainment permit. Can you hear me? Okay, is that better? Yeah, we took so much joy and so much pleasure being able to walk down to, whether it was the bluff or down to the seawall to listen to some music. Certainly during COVID, it was a saving grace just to have the opportunity to go down and listen to a little music and relax a little bit and kind of forget about all the craziness. I have yet to meet anyone here in Lordship that doesn't like music. I haven't met a musician who doesn't like to play music in front of a live audience. So one of the pleasures we have by going down there is we know we're spending our money here locally with local businesses, helping our community, helping our schools, our police, people who clean the beaches, rather than having to go to different neighborhoods. We've just found that this section has just, in the last few years, has just gotten so nice. All the things that, from Riley's and Little Pub, and cleaning up that eyesore in between them was, just changed the area. Changed it for the better. And I think what's being proposed for some additional live music or entertainment down there is something that will just make it even nicer. As a business owner, I know, you know, what's involved in making payroll and making sure I provide a safe work environment for my customers and my staff. I do know that it's probably much more difficult for the food and hospitality industry to continue to draw people in. Obviously, you have to have good food. You have to have a nice environment. I think both the restaurants that we get to enjoy down there offer that. But they have to do a lot of creative things, whether it's trivia night or karaoke or, you know, live entertainment or ladies' night, something like that. Restaurants to draw in new crowds, continually bring in people to keep the old customers coming back and generate new customers. I have a little bit of, I got to come clean here. My son does work down. He's 17 years old. He works as a busboy down at Riley's. I prefer that, obviously. He's got a summer job. They provide a lot of neighbors, a lot of local people I know that work down there, love the area to work in. And I know he's not hanging out somewhere, somewhere getting in trouble. He's actually being provided a means for a summer job. So I love that that's also available. And I think if, with this additional venue, there's going to be a need for more employees, more people to work, maybe more kids can get summer jobs too. I'm sure one thing I've heard tonight, and it started to, keep it brief, but is that everyone seems, most people seem to be willing to compromise to come up with a plan that we can all live with, we can all work with. I know Mr. Gray, for a while, has said he's willing to do whatever it takes to make it work. And I think that's the attitude. We should give him a chance. I think we're all going to benefit from it in the long run. And I just wanted to come up here and voice my support for the project. So thank you.
Kamal Shaham? Kamal Shaham? He left? Okay. Megan Kimball?
Hi, I'm Megan Kimball. I'm on 81 Walnut Street in Stratford. So I just want to voice my opposition to the application for the entertainment permit by Platypus Partners. While the business upgraded, provided by Little Pub across the street at the old Marnix location have been a really welcome addition to the community. And, you know, I was the first one to be super excited about what you've done there. And that I'm really concerned about the addition of an entertainment permit and how that will decrease the quality of life for adjacent neighbors, disrupt traffic and parking, stop resident access to public beaches, and generally allow for an overcrowding of that property. And Mr. Gray did predict that I was going to speak to some of the events that happened last summer, which I will. But my parents taught me that actions speak louder than words. And so that's what I'm sort of relying on as evidence. So while Mr. Gray's current proposals have described atmospheric music, the actuality of some of his events that he's hosted have been extremely disruptive. When Tangled Vine did come last summer, people were set up on public beaches, filled the sidewalks, parked well into the neighborhoods. And I just feel that by booking local bands with known large followings like that, it's not really showing a respect for the neighborhood or how many people you can fit in those small spaces. And these bands are still being listed on his current website of what he foresees this property to be. So it just doesn't align with what he's saying. So I just feel this property in question is not equipped to hold such events. And being in a residential neighborhood, it's hugely disruptive to the surrounding properties. And depending on how the wind is blowing, many neighbors on surrounding streets. And as you know, the Waterfront Commission gave this proposal an unfavorable recommendation. So Mr. Gray speaks about being a good neighbor, yet at the previous P&amp;Z meeting, Platypus had failed to provide mailers to the surrounding properties to alert them of their intentions, which to me is troubling. And while I do really appreciate Platypus Partners' insistence, I'm going about getting the proper permits to hold further events and entertainment. I really cannot trust the intentions of a company that has shown a disregard for their neighbors by booking large and loud gatherings. My fear is that if an entertainment permit is granted, we'll see these types of concerts being more and more frequent. And I love seeing live music, but I go to an appropriate location to do that. Just a little bit as a background, I really love living in Stratford. I grew up here, and I have two young children. I was away for a long time, and I moved back here from Brooklyn, New York 10 years ago because of the town's richly diverse community and affordable access to a beautiful shoreline. Please oppose this application so that our beaches and seawall can be truly enjoyed by all of our residents and visitors, not just those privileged enough to be able to afford expensive drinks and beachfront hotel rooms. Seawall for All, Mr. Gray's saying, should refer not to a business trying to make money, but to the reality of what this neighborhood really can provide. And, you know, if you ever want to have a conversation about equitable access to beaches, I'm happy to be involved in that. But your votes in opposition to the entertainment permit have the power to serve our whole community. Thank you for your time.
I didn't even have to call him. Walter P. Remcunis. Good evening, sir.
Playing games, sir. Good evening, gentlemen. Nice to see you all back on the ball again. My name, as you said, Walter P. Remcunis. I reside at 425 Second Avenue. I bought that house back in 1954 when I got finished on my two-year paid vacation in Korea. I came to Lordship because it was quiet. It was a nice community. I was able to raise my five children. My wife and I, we knew everybody, and everybody knew us at that time because we were a smaller unit. People knew me because of all the various activities I was involved with. I am here not to talk about the restaurant, Little Pub. These guys doing good. When I came there, we had four enterprises down at the beach. We had Marnix, which was doing well. We had Skippers. I know you people remember that one. We had Pops. If you wanted any liquid stuff, there's Pops there. And we had the roller skating rink. And they all did good. Now I see they got problems over there trying to build them condos over where the roller skating rink is. I don't know what that's about. But now to get down to business. I'm here with questions. I'm a little unknown what's going to happen. First of all, is this property going to be an annex to the restaurant? Or is it a separate eminence unto itself? Just that's question one. If it does, where is the kitchen if it's going to be separate? If it does, where is the kitchen, if it's gonna be separate? Has the public health department looked into it? What are they going to serve? And will it be covered under the health department? Number two, in the very thing, sanitation, although we're sewers, restrooms. He says, I think he said, you've got a couple porta potties. People don't like to go, go out to eat and then go to a porta potty. I know you people don't. I know, I know, you're in a hurry, in a rush, you will go to something like that. But are you gonna have to go across the street over to the little pubs? Or was there gonna be, I know they closed down the deli, because they couldn't have nothing on the inside because they didn't have restrooms there. They could eat outside on the sidewalk, but they couldn't eat inside. And they closed it down because they didn't have restrooms. That was the health department. The liquor permit, what type of liquor permit do they have? Do they get something over because of, the governor gave them a present for, for a while? Is that gonna hang on after the 24? I don't know if I'll be here that long, I'll make me 95, but I don't know. And another one, as you know, I was always in environment, I got, I got a question. The DEP, after Sandy, come down and said any structures that are built along the seashore had to be 12 foot above high, mean high tide. The people behind them on Washington Parkway are, when the woman put her property went up 12 feet. Over there at the skating rink, they are gonna go up 12 feet. All these, they got four containers over there now, they're not portable, they don't have wheels on them, so if any kind, like you get another Sandy or Irene or whatever we had, that whole area floods. That's on the six foot of water over the seawall. What's gonna happen to that? The man says, he's talking about bringing in a couple big bands, and we're only gonna have 90 some odd people there on the lot. You know, Darrell, if you've got a name band, they're not just gonna stand there on the lot, they're gonna be hanging around the seawall, they're gonna be over there, up and down Washington Parkway. If you know, you know now, if any of you take a ride down there on a Saturday or Sunday or some nights, it's hell to pay to go down Washington Parkway. On that parking on Washington Parkway seems to be, that's part of Little, Little Pub's parking, and their parking lot's full over there, Washington. Parking is gonna be another one. Oh, I talk too much. Good to see you again. You know, my eye not too keen on this. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Walter, I appreciate that. Daryl Rathburn.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk at today's meeting. I do object to Platypus Partners' petition, mostly, thank you. Better? I do object to Platypus Partners' petition specifically for the outdoor entertainment portion. This evening, I'm just gonna focus on one word, intent. So intent is the difference between assault or it's just an accident, or in the case of Connecticut laws, liquor laws, that a business can be held liable for damages caused by drunk patrons under certain circumstances. Regardless of intent, there's still a victim. I don't know Mr. Grab other than him speaking at the waterfront meeting and at this meeting, so I, I will take him at his word about his intent. But that word, intent, I heard that a lot at the waterfront meeting, several times from Mr. Grab. When asked about cars blocking Washington Parkway when a band was playing, Mr. Grab said, "That was not my intent. I didn't expect so many people to show up." However, nobody was turned out, turned away, and I'm sure the gross profit was far exceeding his intent as well. He was also asked about the band playing outside until after 10:30, and this is weeks before the June meeting with this zoning commission, where he was going to ask for outdoor entertainment permission. Mr. Grab said, "That was not my intent. I wasn't there, and if I was, I would have stopped it." However, he took no, no responsibility for his manager's inaction, and did not even address why he scheduled a band to play, even though he knew that he was asking for permission several weeks later. There were other outdoor entertainment events scheduled that didn't happen due to weather as well. So control intent, how do you control how many people could, could appear at this? I'm sure it is not Mr. Grab's intent to have anything get out of control. It would be bad for his reputation, risk damage to his property, potentially risk harm to his employees. However, he's also a smart businessman, and would probably not turn away another patron, he didn't before, or another 200 patrons. It adds to the profits, it adds to the fun for the patrons. But none of us want a repeat of what happened at, at Harborside Bar in Stratford on September 22nd, 2007. For those of you who are not aware, it took the combined efforts of the Stratford, Milford, and State Police to provide crowd control of 1,000 patrons at 2:00 AM. Two officers were sent to the emergency room for that. I'm sure that was not the intent of the Harborside Bar owners either, but the profits rolled in. A building provides boundaries. It provides a limited number of people due to the occupancy rate, it provides walls that, that shelter the sound in that area, and it provides control. That, if, an outsor, out, an outside entertainment event, it can very easily get out of control. There's no way to limit the number of patrons, no walls, no maximum building occupancy. The only thing that that lot has is a rope.
That bio off the ground.
Tripping height, but I, I'm sure that can be changed as well. There's a potential for virtually unlimited number of people to go down there. The only thing is, is limited by the amount of parking, which many people have already brought up. But I, I know that Little Pub advertises as far away as New York City boroughs, and if you drive a half, an hour from there, or even a half an hour, are you gonna let parking two blocks away bother you, or 10 blocks? No, you're gonna park there. You may even park illegally, because hey, the risk of a $25 fine is a heck of a lot cheaper than paying a cover charge at other places, and you're not gonna turn around and go back for another half hour. Mr. Grab also stated that whatever happens outside of his property is not his responsibility. If so, how much of the town's resources are gonna be required every time there is an event there? I'm not talking about the little events, like if somebody speaks Shakespeare or there, I don't think there would be a crowd control issue. But whenever there is a band there, especially a popular band, how many policemen would be required to keep everything under control? To keep alcohol out of the streets, to keep people out of the streets, for parking, for alcohol consumption where alcohol consumption is not allowed at the seawall in the streets, in the parking lots? Number of patrons intent, in the petition, I could not find anything that said the limit of the number of patrons. I don't think there is a limit, I think it's however many people show up. There was a reference to the 24 tables, that's already been discussed, 96 people, I, really, there's gonna be people standing there. There's gonna be people, when that area fills up, the only boundary is that little rope. People are gonna be standing outside there, they're gonna be standing in the streets, in the parking lot, at the seawall. It's gonna be a madhouse. Parking intent, that 29 parking spaces, I commend Mr. Grab for that, thank you. Sorry, thank you. But that is already filled up. I took a picture, I'll, I'll provide this to you, but that lot was full Saturday night at 7:30, and I think Mr. Grab actually mentioned that too, that on Friday nights, Saturday nights, weekends, it, it tends to fill up. So that is not for an event, that's when there's no event. So it really does not add to the parking for an event. Mr. Driscoll already mentioned the Town of Stratford zoning regulations, and my number actually was 96, sorry. Yeah, 96 parking spaces needed. I think you had 94. And all of that doesn't even include all the people standing in the streets and the parking lots at the seawall who are outside of that area, because it can spill out for hundreds of feet, probably blocks. And I'd like to remind you again that that Harborside Bar incident had 1,000 people. What would 1,000 people, and let's say 250 to 500 cars, look like in Lordship? Operating time limit. I also think there needs to be adjustments for that. The, the pre-approved band played to 10:30, I'm sure that will, I'm sure we will have police making sure that that stops. But also, the Town of Stratford noise ordinance ends at 8:00 PM on Fridays, not 10:00 PM, so that would seriously curtail that as well. In conclusion, results can be far different from intent. Intent can change over time. Intent could change if Little Pub decides to sell that to somebody else. We must rely on regulations and permits and the town resources that are needed to continually enforce them. There is no way to control or limit the number of attendees. Parking will spread out for many blocks for a popular band. Unlike a building that provides a limited environment, an outdoor entertainment does not, no limit. Any well-attended event will eliminate parking spaces from those who want to peacefully enjoy the many marine uses of the seawall. It doesn't add to it, it displaces it. And late evening noise, safety, and problems with drunk patrons will be a recurring problem for the surrounding neighborhood and a burden for the Town of Stratford resources and businesses, and finances, sorry. Thank you very much, I appreciate the, the opportunity.
Next is Sarah Verilla.
Hello, again, thank you for letting me speak again. I said, "Thank you for letting me speak again." I was with the mayor, and I believe he was the chief of police when we talked at the Triangle Park in Lordship beginning of June. I was here at this meeting with you guys a month ago, I was here about 15, 16 days ago at the other meeting we had here, I've spoken at all of them, so I figured what, what the hell. Honestly, I, I can't remember what I told the last people, or you guys the time before that. I have comments in the post, apparently, I'm not sure, I don't want to reiterate myself. I think the first time I stood up here in front of you guys, I forgot to tell you that I grew up in Lordship, lifelong resident in Lordship, and I've just bought back into Lordship from my family of four, four, and a five-year-old. And we hope it's gonna be everything it can possibly be. The only thing I'm worried about is what I've told you guys before, the lack of policing and the bumper cars of these drunks driving out of Lordship. If anyone wants to take a ride down the Burma Road middle of the day, check out how many wildlife are hit, and how many of those metal pilings are now crushed in, just in the last month. I've, I've taken note of it, coming into Lordship and going out of Lordship, as well as, as liquor store bags of nips, not only being thrown down Washington Parkway as people hold their red cups already drunk walking down to the existing bar that's there, but coming in and out, they're on, they're getting drunk on their way in, so guess how drunk they're gonna be on their way out. I didn't hear him mention security, private security for his establishment at any of these meetings. That bothers me, because it's not just the town that has to worry about policing, where there is a huge lack of it in this beautiful pristine area, but what is it that he's gonna provide security for onsite for these people that are there eating or drinking, taking their drinks to go across to the seawall? I agree with someone who spoke about being able to push their elderly grandma at 80 down the seawall, having, navigate somebody with their cocktail falling over, or any of that. I, I hope to be able to take my children down there without hearing cat calls from somebody that had a little too many at 3:00 PM on a Sunday. Asking for seven days a week, that's a broad spectrum. I, I just don't like the takeover, it's gonna be a sweeping motion, and it's gonna be a lot of change. And the people that are here, not discounting anybody that lives in Lordship, because you all might have seen a little bit of what I got to see growing up and now what I see living there, but it's, people go places to enjoy these things. Like I told you a month ago, I know I said this, then they get to go home. These are these people's home. Everybody that's here, this was full last time and the time before. Now this side, I'm not gonna talk ill about anybody. But I'm just saying, nobody had to ask these people to come. They came because they've seen it, they've witnessed it, nobody's scared of nothing. All right? But what the problem is, is that it shouldn't take a hazardous incident to open anyone's eyes to what you guys already can see coming. And I'm sorry, but I've already seen a couple missteps that don't really let me trust the words coming out of his mouth that he's telling you. Maybe he's a great guy, but this is not his Venice Beach, this is not his cash cow. This is a residential waterfront neighborhood. Maybe people bought into it recently because they're retired, they want to enjoy it, but they also want entertainment? I'm sorry, the people that have lived here for 50, 60, 70 years, have their whole family here, they're not worried about y'all's entertainment, you know? They still want to come home and live, they still gotta put those kids to bed at 8:00 to wake up at 6:00. They gotta do what they gotta do, and that's why they're all here, because they care. I said that last time, too. I just don't, I don't want to see it overrun and out of control, because right now, just letting people, the fact that he's taking advantage of letting people walk off his property with drinks, that's gonna be everywhere except on his two properties. I think there's enough of that in the Little Pub already, and I think there's really kind of gonna be no control of that, at what he wants to do, where he wants to do it. And I'm, I'm concerned about the people I've known for 40 years there, I grew up with, and their kids that grew back, you know, into the neighborhood. It's, I don't want to read my words in the paper saying, "Lordship's a bottleneck, let's please do something about it before somebody drives into somebody's living room," because that's what the paper quoted me saying. It's true! It's true! Some unsuspecting schmo that lives there, that loves it there, is, somebody's gonna get hurt if there's no regulations put in place, if there's no security put in place, and there's no boundaries put in place. From Little Pub to Russian Beach shouldn't be a free-for-all drinking haven. It, there's gotta be something, and keep getting the cover of the governor's order, keep getting that, one day it's not gonna be there, and it's gonna be... And it's going to be mayhem down there. I'm just asking you guys to please think of what everybody else said. The people that actually live there, invested there, taxes ain't cheap, people, they suck. And it's for a reason that people chose to be in that neighborhood and they've sacrificed stuff. I'm going to sacrifice stuff to be back down there. I don't want to see somebody run over one of my fucking kids, excuse me, excuse my language, one of my kids. Because we walk up and down Washington Parkway, because that's where I grew up. I went to school at Erica Kent, beautiful family, loved the skating rink. It's a great place, but it's not his private boardwalk to exploit. It's just not. Please keep it a community and put rules in place if you do give him some lead, because once he has, it'll take it. That's it. Thank you.
So just some housekeeping, we're coming up 10 o'clock, we have five more names on there, and then of course we'll take anybody else that wants to speak, and then the applicant will have a chance to rebut, so, and we have two more petitions to hear tonight. So just if you can focus your remarks, we'd all really appreciate so that the commission can get through its business.
My name is Doreen Baddamelli, I am a property owner at 147149 Park Street. I sent a letter in to certain commissioners, I don't know if it was distributed to everybody here, but I won't go through my entire letter, which basically talked about Marnix as I saw growing up in Stratford thirty years ago, I'm older than that, just, you know, and the way it changed and the way it slid downhill, and then when Little Pub came in, how they regenerated not only the restaurant but the hotel and the whole area. So I felt the need to write the letter after I read the article in the Connecticut Post, which was just, I think, totally one-sided, and I just thought it was disrespectful the way it was written. So now I came to the meeting tonight, and I've been listening to the neighbors and I understand their point. I have a couple, I'm in a unique situation where I understand it on both levels, but a couple things I want to talk about that were mentioned. One, the zoning issues. Now, I didn't see any of the issues that were addressed, but a lot of the zoning issues probably pertain to new builds. So when you're looking at your zoning issues, look at them knowing that it usually pertains to new builds. This is an existing commercially zoned space. It has always been a restaurant and a hotel, he's doing, they have the same thing going on there. All they're doing is expanding their operation to the lot across the street, which I believe was also a restaurant. So when you look at zoning, keep that in mind. There was a comment made about wind carrying noise. Wind does not carry noise, noise is only carried when it has a material thing to carry it, whether it's reverberating off of glass or copper or whatever, wind does not carry noise, so it does not matter what the wind direction is. Denying entertainment, I understand that's a part of the application, and actually they're doing the right thing by applying for the zoning entertainment, et cetera. There's, I don't know that I've been in a bar or restaurant in Stratford that doesn't have entertainment, and I'm hearing there's only one entertainment permit issued, so how is everybody else doing it? They are doing the right thing by asking for the application. So to deny him based on all this craziness of thousand-person brawls and everything else, I've been to other Little Pubs, I've heard the entertainment, they have acoustic guitars, they have a couple people. I don't know what the band was that happened, whenever it happened, a couple weeks ago or whatever it was. Maybe that was a live and learn situation, maybe they had a band that they didn't realize were going to draw as many people. And I'm sure, knowing my guess of how much money that they have invested in that property and building out that property, they're not going to put themselves in a position where they're going to have some crazy band, where they're going to have an all-out brawl, and then the neighbors are going to hate them and their life is going to be more difficult. From what I've seen, they've done everything they can to reach out to the neighbors, to make the property beautiful, it's a beautiful property now. I saw the pictures of the hotel online, it's a top-notch hotel. Before, my guess is it was used for prostitution, it was a mess. So I'm also wondering why nobody here who's complained about the possibility of noise, nobody's complained about the music that's playing at Riley's? I mean, I've heard music at Riley's before, and nobody's complained about that, so why is there...
Excuse me ma'am, can we just have some respect for the speaker, we'd like to hear her remarks. Thank you, proceed.
Thank you. So nobody complained about the music at Riley's? Maybe theirs is going to be the same type of music. So I'm just wondering why everybody's up in arms about music down there. Now, my personal experience, I know a lot of mention was made about the people coming down there and it was jam-packed. I have a beach property in Milford. I live adjacent to, we have a Milford pocket beaches, so if you come down the street, if this is the street, there's the pocket beach, okay? And it's for the people that live on the street. My house is here. When I bought that house, I said to myself, "I have two things going on here. I have everybody that lives on the street as my neighbor, but I also have the added view of not having another house up against me." When these residents bought their houses, and I appreciate their concerns, they knew there were restaurants there, they knew the venues that were there, they have bars, there's restaurants, there's a hotel, they knew what they were buying, the same way I knew what I was buying. And do I have to bite my tongue a lot? Certainly. The beach hours are supposed to be from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Are there days that some people are out there till 2:00, 3:00 in the morning and talking too loud? Yes. But I knew what I bought, and you know what? Sometimes you have to respect that people are enjoying themselves and give them that, that bit. It's not going to be all the time, there might be a hiccup here and there, but it's just common courtesy to try to just live and let live, as they say. My other experiences, my first house was on Park Street, I still own it, I have a two-family on Park Street and I love it. Stratford is a wonderful town. I lived right up the street from the gazebo, where bands would come and play, can I hear them at my house? Yeah. Were people parking all the way up my street and turning on my driveway? Yeah. But you know what? It was enjoyable for the people in the area. I would not deny them that. So to make, and again, I understand your issues, I do. I live on a beach, they have parties on the beach, there has to be a time where you have to try to come to an agreement, and I think that Mr. Gray has said, he's willing to make concessions, he's willing to limit the times. I'm sure he's not going to want bands that are going to be attracting thousands of people that are going to cause fights. The other thing I would like to bring up is I heard Mr. Gray talk about these runs and these jogs and these dog adoption and all these nonprofit things. I mean, it sounds to me like they're doing a great job for the community. I mean, they're really philanthropic and I think that they would continue that. So you could sit here and you could say, "I don't want this and I don't want that," but then think of the alternatives. You have somebody who has brought that property up to a beautiful standard and is contributing to the local people, the nonprofits, everything else. I think you should give him a chance, his intentions seem sincere, and that's what I have to say. So thank you for your time.
Good evening and thank you. I'm a newbie, so bear with me. I do want to say very quickly, I'm impressed, to everybody out here and to you all, the nation, I think, could learn a little bit about how we're conducting ourselves here, seriously, very well. I'm here in support of what he's trying to do. You know, I've lived in Stratford, by the way, 45 Roland Street. I'm going to breathe for a second. 45 Roland Street, Stratford, lived in Stratford for nineteen years. Spent a lot of time down at Marnix. Anybody that's gone to Marnix on Sundays, you know, I was probably one of the families that tried to beat you there at church time. Loved it, but I'm very happy at what he's been able to do and what he's been able to do at redeveloping that area. Same with you, Rich, over at Riley's, same thing. There was a previous spot there that needed some tuning up. That whole area looks a lot better and is working a lot better. He's done a lot of stuff in Old Saybrook, in Wilton, in Fairfield, in Greenwich, that's a Tiffany list of Connecticut towns, and Stratford's on that list. And that's what we want, businesses out there to see, homeowners out there to see, parents with their families to see. And so far, the, I don't know what number you gave, 677 days, 766 days, whatever number it is, he's got a pretty good track record so far and he's trying to figure out how to make this work. And I ask that you guys try and figure out a way to help him make it work and have a second spot in town, that's a benefit to the community. All right? That's all I got. Thanks.
First of all, thank you all so much for sitting here in the middle of all this fanny fatigue and hearing us all out. This is so kind of you, especially when you say you have two hearings after this. Can everybody hear? Hello, hello? I'm not going to reiterate the things I would normally have said because other people have said them better than I can, and that'll help keep it shorter. I do want to make a few comments on things that have been said by other people. First of all, I, like many people, am a music lover, I don't think that is the issue. The issue is where the music is played, what it attracts, and for how long it goes on. Bands on the Bluffs is great, once a month, announced in advance, parking along the residential street. If that were every single night, we probably wouldn't be seeing Bands on the Bluffs anymore. So that's a comment about parking. And then what worries me, I love what Little Pub has done, like everybody else does, the issue is not Little Pub. We all like Little Pub, you've done a great job with Little Pub, and my relatives are coming to visit this month and they're going to be staying there at my invitation. So Little Pub is not the issue, the issue is the lot across the street from Little Pub. Plenty of people have addressed that. What worries me about what Mr. Gray is requesting is the limitlessness of it. He's putting out a request for seven days a week but saying, "But I won't really do it seven days a week, I'll only do it every other day and up to this time." But once a permit is granted, the permit is for seven days a week. That scares me, because you can change it at any point you want to change it. And I really like what the former speaker said about intent, I just love it. Again, the looseness of Mr. Gray in saying, "If it doesn't work, we'll make it work." You get a permit not according to what you intend to do if something doesn't work, you get a permit according to what you plan that will work. Waterfront business, waterfront businesses are supposed to be, are supposed to have water-dependent uses. That's another thing that concerns me because I didn't hear anybody, I didn't hear Mr. Gray or anybody else address the fact that this lot will not be used for water-dependent uses. And then somebody said, "It always looks great, there's never any trash." I just want to give credit again to Linda, the nurse who comes every other day and cleans Lordship before the man came out for his walk in the morning, who sees no trash, it's probably because of Linda, let's give her a little credit for that. And then finally, I want to say something to defend myself because me being quoted in the paper but with things that I didn't say is just, I know it's journalistic license, I have no problem with anybody drinking or smoking weed, nor did I say that I did. What I object to is people out at midnight or 1:00 in the morning parked at the seawall, drunk and smoking weed. That's when I walk my dog and I come down there to smell the fresh air and there isn't any. That's all I have to say.
First of all, thank you very, very much. Before I start, I'd like to share something with all of you that I haven't heard shared before. When people talk to me, there seems to be a difference in their minds between music and bands. And Mr. Gray, sound engineer, I'm an engineer, there's several other engineers in here, and we all go data-happy, but I just want to let you know what we're talking about when we talk about sound. And I'm going to step away from the microphone. The town regulations call out forty-five decimals of sound after 8:00, fifty-five before. This is forty-five, that's fifty-five, this is forty-five decimals. This is the sound level that the town accepts after 8:00. This is fifty-five decimals, this is the sound level that the town accepts before, after 8:00. How are we talking about, I understand we're talking about music, but how are we talking about large bands when this is the level of the music that can be heard one foot from the property? I don't know, I don't understand it, maybe the rules are going to change, but for now, these are the rules. Regarding the petition, there have been many statements made before the town committees and the town commissions over the past several months. With so many people involved and concerned with the town statutes affecting this petition, with the governor's COVID statutes affecting this petition, with the assets of the town, the police department personnel poised to be stressed, I felt that it was time for what has become a two-sided situation to begin to discuss things with one another in order to come up with a common ground. Last week, I contacted a group of residents in Lordship who have opposed the position, and I contacted Mr. Gray as well. And I asked if we could meet and see if we could agree and come up with something that was acceptable to all of us. After the meeting, I was going to email the hundred residents that I keep in constant contact with and present the results of their comments to what the five or six of us had discussed. These hopefully, excuse me, we were to meet two days ago. Later in the week, the meeting fell apart. The group from town decided they didn't want to meet. I went to Mr. Gray, I apologized, we talked together as we often do. However, obviously, there's still opportunity for items to be discussed and possibly agreed upon. With the two sides so far apart, sometimes feels to me like Congress, and with some of the presented plans presently moot because of the existing town and state statutes that affect the petition, and because of the lack of perhaps due diligence by some of the items to be affected, I began to feel that the acceptance of the proposal tonight, although it might be valid, might be premature. As it stands, presently, the site in question has been rezoned to waterfront commercial. Presently, Little Pub remains in steady business on Washington Parkway, which I think is amazing that you can keep five businesses running through COVID, I really do. Presently, Governor Lamont's item 7MM states that there can be no entertainment on a piece of property that previously did not have entertainment. of property that previously did not have entertainment. Presently, a town statutes prohibit outdoor music by restaurants in Stratford. Presently, as I said, the town statutes limits noise greatly. As of the past weekend, the entire parking area on the Washington and Beach Avenue site, as was mentioned, was fully filled on both Friday and Saturday nights. I spoke with Mr. Grave about this and he was correct. We have no idea who was parking there. We do know that the lot was filled. We do know that the seawall was filled. We do know that Lower First Avenue was filled. We do know that, uh, Lower Washington was filled. And we do know that there was no commercial activity at Platypus Site going on. As of two weeks ago, after speaking with the, the zoning commission office, there had been no requirements by the zoning committee, I guess as a standard, to have platypus partners provide a traffic and parking study for this area. As of the, as of this morning, after speaking with the zoning commission office, and I have to put this in quotations because this is what was said, it was believed that no request for a traffic and parking study had been requested by any Stratford committee or commission. As of now, we know that if this permission is, this petition is approved tonight without residents agreeing to sit down and converse with the applicant and without due diligence with regard to increased traffic and parking requirements that will occur, the Police Department of Stratford will in the future be tasked with requirements to control and enforce increased traffic and parking, enforce the Stratford sound ordinance with regard to mark monitoring levels, control and enforce increased pedestrian traffic in the seawall area, control and enforce alcohol use on the town walkways and streets, control and enforce alcohol use on the town parkland and beaches. Really, it's time to sit down and discuss and analyze. Thank you.
Mary Ann Cox? Mary Ann Cox? Okay. So that's the last name that was on the list. So, uh, is there anybody else that wishes to speak on the, I saw a name in the, woman in the back, come forward. And again, folks, just a reminder, please make your remarks concise as possible. We greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Christine Newlin, 103 Lordship Road. Um, I have a map here and I, I don't believe that Little Pub owns the beach in front of their restaurant, according to the map that's on the town of Stratford website. And I'm just concerned about the entertainment venue as far as kayaks and paddleboards. If they're already using them, are they launching them from in front of their place? And why are they allowed when we are not allowed to do this at Long Beach or Short Beach? And if you allow it for here, then it should be allowed at all of the beaches. That's all I have to say and ask.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on the petition? Gentlemen?
Hi, my name is Bob Routhier. I live at 280 Stratford Road, uh, at the corner, that's the corner of First Avenue. Uh, I'd like to say just a few things. I don't have a prepared speech, but I do have a, I've been there for 35 years and I know the area and I, people have moved here saying, well, this area was ugly, it was this. No, I love this area. This area was always beautiful. But one of the points I want to make is, for all the supporters of Mr. Gray, I, I agree with you. He runs a good business. He runs a very good business. He's very fortunate. He has six of them. He runs great businesses. He knows what he has to do to make his businesses run. It's money. That's what it's about. Community relations makes money. All right? I have no problem with Mr. Gray making money. I applaud him. That's why he's there. But not on my back, not on the backs of the people who live here. When people say, well, you should have known what you had, what you were buying when you moved in, the people did know what they were buying. It wasn't there before. Okay? What he wants to do was not even proposed. All right? Now they're looking at something that they didn't count on, but it's, 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 there's a chance that it could happen, much to the degradement of the, of the neighborhood. And I'm telling you, it's gonna happen. I lived there. I watched the cars circle round and round on Stratford Road, waiting to get their chance of getting a parking spot. They go over and over, up First Avenue, Jefferson, all the streets, they just go round and round waiting to get their parking spot. All right? I've traveled to there. One of the pleasures of my life was every time I came home, I'd drive right past my house on the corner, go right to the seawall, drive around. Thing of the past. Can't do it. Not anymore. You got people coming out of the, out of the, out of the restaurant, they've been drinking, which is fine. It's, it's, it's a restaurant, you know, is, but what's being proposed is not in the spirit of having a, a, a valued neighbor of a restaurant in the neighborhood. That's not what we're looking at. As Mr. Gray said to me, when he said, why do you think I bought that lot? I bought it to make money. Excellent. You can make money, just not on the backs of your neighbors. He, he keeps on saying that it's, 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 uh, very important to be friends with your neighbors. And I agree with you. Well, you're not doing that. All right? Some of the people that spoke, they said, whoa, I live right in the area. Uh, it doesn't bother me a bit, the people. Well, one person lives on the other side of the locked gate on Strawline Road. It's locked. Nobody's gonna go there. It's locked. All right? Other people, other people say, well, they're not gonna come in my area. You don't know that. It's going to happen. Without a doubt, it's going to happen. I used to ride a, I used to ride a motorcycle. We used to go to Vermont for breakfast. All right? It was a nice time. I'm not trying to deprive anybody of coming to a nice, beautiful area and having a good time and enjoying themselves. But having drinking on a bare lot in the sun, almost unsupervised, at least in his bar, I'm sure he's not gonna lose his liquor license because he doesn't want, he doesn't want to lose his liquor license and, and over serve people. So he's gonna tell his bar contenders not to over serve. How can you possibly keep that contract with, 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 with your neighbors and with the state and supervise the drinking that's going on in an open lot on picnic tables, surrounded by people, and you don't know where the heck that liquor's going or how much? It's, it's not conducive to the type of living that anybody in that neighborhood or that part of town went in for. I, I, I applaud your, the people who support you are right in supporting you. You're a good businessman. You cleaned up that motel. I know what that was.
Excuse me, sir? Can you just direct your comments to the commission?
I, I, I know what he did. He cleaned up that motel. Okay? It was a, it was needed to be cleaned up. He made a valuable contribution to the restaurant, to the, to the neighborhood, giving that, making that restaurant. He brought in business, he brought, brought in, and, and, and people and they enjoyed themselves. But you know, another thing too, everybody is worried about how he's gonna conduct his, how he's gonna run his business. Well, part of zoning, uh, job, in my thoughts anyway, doing what's right for the people, doing right, doing right for the town and, and, and what, and good for business. He's great for business. I love the guy. I mean, I love, I love his businesses. They're great. But the town does not, the town does not benefit at all.
Sir?
I'm sorry. The town, the town does not benefit from this, this, this fiasco that's being, that's being brought up here. He will not pay any more taxes than he does now. He doesn't bring in any, any, any value to other businesses in the area. All it is, is detrimental to the area. I mean, it, it's just, it doesn't make sense for a small area like that, in my opinion. I mean, I, my son got married on the Bluffs. The police were there at 9:30 letting us know that we had to shut down the music and make sure it's done by 10:00. We're all, we're all neighbors here. I mean, the neighbors were.
Can you spell your last name for me, please?
I don't know if I should.
T-H-I-E-R.
I, like I said, I'm not, I didn't come up here with a prepared speech. Uh, I listen to a lot of things. I, I in no way want to besmudge this gentleman. He, he's running a good business, but it's not what we need. It's not what we want. We're not, we're not, we're not degrading the business that he already has. He's making a good living and I applaud him for that. That's what we want. But enough is enough. That's my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other people want to speak? Anybody else? Okay, woman in the back first and then the gentleman here.
Hi, um, my name is Karen Coaches and I live 194 Lordship Road. Um, the, I don't have a problem that we're down in Lordship and it's a beautiful community and having a couple restaurants. Um, I'm glad that both of them are doing very well. Um, but one huge concern that I see on the streets, on my street, let alone all, you know, down at the seawall, is the volume of traffic that has come into Lordship. And you can sit around on our front porches on a Friday night, Saturday night and speeding up and down Stratford Road. I try to cross the road just to go home from friends' houses and you've got to watch out for traffic. And I'm very concerned, like some of the other people medically were sort of like, well, there's been no tragic accident. Are we waiting for one to happen? And then how are we gonna feel? Um, you know, we have looked into in the past getting more police in the area just in general to keep crime down and things like that. I mean, we've got a beautiful community. And we need more police all over the place, not just even at the seawall, um, because it's going on up and down all of our streets. Um, and we want to be safe. The kids are out riding their bikes, we're all out walking and older people, young people, and we just all want to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to emphasize the fact that the safety.
Just your name and address, sir?
Oh, Bob Whelan. I live at First and Ocean Avenue. And, uh, everything has already been said. It's all I'm gonna do is add a safety factor. I mean, the point of the, the guardrails going on Burma Road, that's kind of an indication, you know, that the birds are dying and, uh, there's a lot of things that are happening out there. But going back to, uh, uh, the safety aspect, one thing that's happened in the past year is that there's probably been well over 60 new families that have come into Lordship. And they all have young children, dogs, and they like to go out biking and they like to walk their dogs at all hours of the day and night. And I've seen in my own little property area, um, three incidences in the past month where people are just even three or four o'clock in the afternoon, they're not paying attention as they're driving. There's more cars on the side of the road, there's little kids riding their bikes and the, and the bicyclists, especially little kids, they don't seem to be paying attention as much. And likewise, now we have drivers that are likewise somewhat impaired. Maybe they're on pot, maybe they just had a few drinks, but now it's gonna be a combination of both. And the new laws have passed and I guess that lot 25 feet from their front door means that at those picnic tables, they can just as well drink beer and smoke a little pot if they want to, as the law says, if you're past 25 feet, that it's okay. And that's been going along at the seawall all these years. And fortunately, we haven't had any incidents, but now there's more and more people that are gonna be doing this as a result of having this lot and 100 more people in their cars coming down to enjoy themselves, have fun. It's good. But unfortunately, they're gonna be impaired and they're gonna make our streets more and more unsafe. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else wish to speak on the petition? Anybody else wish to speak? Here. Okay. Okay. Just name and address, sir.
My name is Anthony Mingalolo at 216 First Ave. And as the gentleman just mentioned, I am one of these 60 or some odd new families in the neighborhood. Me and my wife came from a city in Connecticut, Stanford, and we wanted someplace quiet to settle down and basically start our family, which we hope to do soon. And the thing that also attracted us to the neighborhood was ironically, this gentleman's Little Pub and the rehabbing of the area, so to speak. And my family's been from Stratford for 50 years. My grandmother's 95 years old and still lives in the town and pays crazy taxes, just like we all do, I think, here. And I think to do nothing in that area would be worse than try, not working with this gentleman on some sort of reasonable solution, because I do share some concerns about driver speeding. That is definitely one of my pet peeves, if you ask my wife. And people being drunk at all hours of the day, that would quite obviously bother me a lot. But I think there has to be something done with that area in general. And I think he's come forward with a proposal which can be worked on and something reasonable can be done to hopefully enhance the area and make it better and more attractive because the town needs to obviously continue to attract businesses. And pushing him out will just send a, a poor signal, I think, to everyone. So, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to speak? Anybody else? Hearing none. You have the right to rebuttal, sir. You can wrap up and answer any questions that were raised and end it up.
I will try to be, uh, brief. Um, there's a lot to unpack there, um, all over, all over, lots of different topics. Um, it's, I understand the fear and, um, I've tried to put forth a, a proposal that says, let's work on this and let's put fences around it so that everybody can feel, you know, good about what we're trying to do here. Um, traffic is traffic. Like I was driving up Washington Parkway the other day, probably 11:30 in the morning and some older gentleman just blew the stop sign in front of me, right? I mean, so he wasn't drinking, he was just, you know, inconsiderate. And then he got to the intersection where you take a left to go to the beach and he blew through that stop sign too. And you know what? Maybe he's the guy that's crashing into the guardrails. I don't know. There's just bad drivers out there. It's not all alcohol or traffic related. It's just bad driving. So you, you can take bad drivers and then extrapolate that it's somehow due to, um, you know, you know, visiting a local restaurant, but it's just, it's just people. And you know, um, that's, that's just a fact of life. Wherever you go, they're texting. They don't necessarily have to be drinking. They're doing stupid stuff while they're driving. So I can say Little Pub is against stupid driving. I mean, I'll, I'll leave that with you. Um, you know, Dave Driscoll and Megan and I forget the gentleman's name, they were talking about, you know, live music and intent. And I talked earlier about there, people want to talk, but they're not listening to what I said. You know, um, one of the comments was the bar would be open till 1:00 AM. No, I said the hours of operation are 12 to 9:00 PM. And I'm willing to stipulate that any way that we have to stipulate that. And I remember a comment from the earlier meeting that, that said, um, we have, was it Harbor, Harborview? Who was, who was, Harborside? You know, we, you know, it's hard to be in. Harborside, you know, we, you know, it's hard to be ambiguous because of Harborside. And, um, it's not you, because you're a nice guy, and thank you very much, but it's what if you sell the lot? I don't know how to figure it out so that if I ever sell the lot, it goes away, right? Or I don't know how to fence it in in such a way that, um, makes it a permanent sort of thing, because it doesn't exist. But I'm willing to try. I'm, I'm willing to be the party of how, not the party of no. I am the party of how. So, let's figure out a way to make this work for everybody. It, some people are never going to agree with it, and I, I, I understand their fears, you know what I mean? Um, and I'm trying to figure out a way to, to work, um, with everybody so that we can figure it out. Gentleman gave a decibel, a decibel reading, you know, demonstration there. That's the rules, that's the rules. I tell you what, that's gonna preclude any loud rock band down there, you know what I mean? So, there you go. If, if that's what the rules are, that's what the rules are. You know what? There's not gonna be two thousand people down there coming to see a band, because you know what? If a band's that popular, we just wouldn't have them there. Um, people brought up, uh, brought up images of, of bands booked for, for this summer. You have to book them in advance, you know what I mean? Those activities are not gonna happen. A, 'cause they don't have a permit, and B, you know, we just, I mean, they're not on our website, they're on the band's website, so, you know, they should just go take them down. But we have to, we, you know, they booked a bunch of bands in advance, thinking that we had a entertainment permit. And once we learned we didn't have an entertainment permit, we stopped. We stopped. You know, the band that played till ten-thirty, look, I can give you reasons for all these things, and I'm not being irresponsible, I owned them all. I said, look, here's what happened. That band was supposed to start five to eight, it was raining out, they should've canceled it, they went on at seven-thirty, they wanted to play their three hours, they played till ten-thirty. Absolutely stupid, right? I wasn't there, though. So, I'm, I'm not absolving myself of responsibility, I'm saying, I just had bad managers, you know, that, that should've known better. Shouldn't have happened. Um, so, I've been down there now every time there's been anything going on. I go to the Cornell turn, I'm down, come on down, it's fun. You know who's down there? It's neighborhood people walking down, taking me for seventy-five dollars in gift cards 'cause they win the, win, win the, uh, win the tournament. You know, they come down, they're with their wives, there's some kids, you know, I'll plant the victory flag on people out there having a good time. I don't wanna, my victory flag is not, you know, two hundred people down there causing a ruckus. That's, that's a nightmare for everybody, it's a nightmare for us. So, that is not what I'm proposing here. You wanna talk about intent? I'll tell you the intent. The intent is to have a nice outdoor venue where people can go have a good time, right? And the definition of a good time is one that doesn't, you know, doesn't intrude on anyone else's, you know, enjoyment of their quality of life. So, let's fence it in, right? How can we do that? I've put a proposal forth saying, look, I, I can live with this, you know, but, um, if you can't live with it, let's figure out what everybody can live with. One last question was on the size of the building lot. Um, a woman asked, how big of a building could I build if I built a permanent building? Another gentleman mentioned that due to FEMA regulations, if I built a permanent structure there, I'd have to be fourteen feet in the air. So, to me, the least impact on the neighbors' views are those shipping containers, which are ten feet high. You know, those are, they don't require any sort of raising. If it floods, you know, the town made us anchor them into the ground there. If, if, the, the doors are open, so if water comes through, it'll, it'll go through them. So, we thought about all that stuff. I mean, the alternative would be to build something which is two and a half stories tall, you know what I mean? We'll back, we'll be back here, you know, talking about how I'm building a, uh, building a two-story building, mixed-use, you know, uh, you know, mixed-use facility where it's going to block everyone's views who's behind me. And that's not what we're proposing, and that's not what we're talking about. But when you ask these questions, like, jeez, what could be there? I think that what we got right now there is pretty sweet, you know? And so, let's work together and figure out a way to make it work, and, um, I'm here to listen, I've made the offer to talk to anybody, but as the gentleman said, let's be the party of how. I think that was the, uh, one of the best things I heard tonight. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Why don't you just say it to the, the town planner just wanted to address that one point? So, Mr. Toda?
So, um, the maximum building coverage according to the zone standards are on your site plan itself, and it says, um, thirty-five percent for the waterfront district.
Yes. One thing, uh, so I just wanted to acknowledge receipt of a few different emails. Kathy Pearson, opposition, Mary Cotter, we got a written remark from as well, Richard and Dicky Hawkins in favor, uh, Bob Mitchell in favor, and I think I had one more. Hang on one sec, folks, there's just a lot in here. And Kathleen Carlyle, uh, in opposition. So, those are the last ones that I had. Mr. Henrich, you had a question?
No, I just didn't, I mean, at this point, I don't know that we'll have the opportunity to discuss it, so I don't know if we wanna, um-
If you have any last questions for the petitioner, um, that we need to know before we close the public hearing, which I intend to do at the conclusion of this, now would be the right time.
Well, can he come back when we discuss this and vote on it to answer questions at that time?
Uh, Mr. Florak?
Uh, Alexander Florak, counsel for the zoning commission tonight. Um, no, once the public hearing's closed, I don't think it would be appropriate for the applicant to address the zoning commission's concerns. So, it's sort of speak now or forever hold your true, uh, hold, hold your peace, but, uh, sorry, did I say that right? It's been a long day for me, too. Um, but I think as Chairman Solhavy noted, um, if the applicant consents, the public hearing could be kept open for an additional thirty-five days, uh, but he would have to consent to that now, um, because I think that, you know, under eight dash seven D of the Connecticut general statutes, you have thirty-five days once a public hearing is open to complete it. And I, I think today or tomorrow is day thirty-five. So, unless the applicant consents to keeping it open for an additional thirty-five days, uh, tonight's the last night to address issues.
I mean, well, I mean, for the interest of time, I'm looking at, you know, eleven o'clock, we have two more applications.
Mm-hmm.
How long do we want to drag this on tonight?
At this point, I have no other, I'm not planning, uh, I'm just gonna call for a vote on closing the petition right now, unless you have anything else that you want to cover, sir.
No, I suppose not, then.
Okay. Okay, in that case, can we have a motion to close the petition?
Motion to close.
Motion to close, Mr. Henrich. Second, Mr. Vigliotti, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously. So, what this does now is the public hearing portion is closed. Um, this starts a clock, a sixty-five day clock for the zoning commission to render a decision. Uh, we will take it up, um, at the point where we may discuss it later, but at this point, the public hearing is closed, and we have to move on to our other two petitions. So, we will let you know. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and if you will please exit as quietly as possible, that'd be appreciated. Twenty-seven ninety-two Main Street, Petition of Kern Volkswagen Incorporated. Folks, please take your conversations outside, we need to talk about the next petition. Okay, I'm just gonna read this now so that we can move forward. Twenty-seven ninety-two Main Street, Petition of Kern Volkswagen Incorporated, seeking a site plan review and modification of a special case approval to legalize site improvements to a car storage lot incidental to a car dealership in an LB zone.
Yes, sir.
Can we have order-
Please exit the room with your private attention, so we can carry on our reading. Thank you.
Good evening, sir. Thank you for your patience, and my apologies. Uh, you have the floor, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Attorney Max Case. My office is at one eighty-five Plains Road in Milford. I'm here on behalf of Kern Volkswagen Inc., uh, our site plan and modification, um, regarding a second entrance into, uh, their car storage lot. I'm just gonna say for the record, Mr. Chairman, um, I've served on the Board of Alderman in Milford, I served as city attorney in Milford, I served in the state senate in Connecticut. I know what it's like to sit here late at night, so we'll try to be brief.
Thank you, Senator, I appreciate that.
You're quite welcome. Um, so, just to give some framework to this, uh, you previously see approved on May seventh, two thousand eighteen, uh, legalizing the establishment of a parking lot for storage of motor vehicles, um, incidental to the dealership that's across the street. Uh, Mr. Kern is here, he would like to speak in favor of his application and explain to you what the application's all about.
Mm-hmm. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'll make this brief. I think this is simply a misunderstanding. This started in two thousand seventeen with, uh, our property across the street. We had a building on there that we never used, it's been empty for forty years. It was in disrepair, and it needed a tremendous amount of, of repair. So, we decided to take it down and remove it. We did environmental remediation, we did, uh, phase one and phase two, we, we, uh, remediated a lot of the materials, and, uh, the intent was just to make a parking lot out of it, uh, or repave it and stripe it. It's been a parking lot for forty years, we've never used it for any other reason, uh, you know, it's our intent now to keep it a parking lot. The town approached me after the building went down and said, we'd like to talk to you about making some improvements to the exterior. And I said, okay, I'm happy to ta- talk about it. We went back and forth. They originally wanted me to hide or, or, or put some kind of barrier between the street and the, and the parking lot, and I said, well, wait a minute, you want me to hide the cars? I, 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 I said, I'd be opposed to that. Uh, they said, well, what about some kind of facial wall that you couldn't, uh, you couldn't see the cars? And that was, again, a, a, an issue. So, as a compromise, I agreed to a three-foot wall, and we agreed that we would put the three-foot wall up and put some lighting on it, and then I would pave it, and then we'd be done with it. From the time of the building coming down and the approval for the, for the three-foot wall was a year's time where I was able to operate the property without the building on it. I've never had, uh, use of that space. So, we discovered quickly that it wouldn't be efficient to have that wall based on that old curb cut. The old curb cut was to the right of the property, and that would, uh, prevent me from, uh, plowing in the winter on the left, and it, it would require me to stack cars, which would be inefficient. So, it left me with two choices, either put, move the cut to the center and park cars left and right, or add a cut so that I can have trucks coming in, in, in one and out the other, and I would have a lane in the middle and cars on both sides. And that's what we, uh, determined would be the most efficient, effective means to have a, a car lot there. My engineers that designed the plan, the same engineers that did the original plan, and I was told that I needed state approval to do that. So, we went to the DOT, and we spent a year going back and forth with plans in order to add the curb cut, um, which over time we did. We changed it five or six times, we got approval, I hired a contractor, he started the work, uh, he finished the wall, and then I got a letter from zoning saying, cease and desist. You, 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 you didn't, uh, you didn't do what we approved here. I didn't know I had to come back here and get a second approval. And, um, and that's where we are. The, the, the contractor, uh, dealt with, uh, Tracy May at DOT, she lives in Stratford, she drives by that property every day, she knows it and is very familiar with it. She said, go ahead and do the work, and he, and he started it. And then I got a cease and desist order, and then we got COVID, and here we are, a year later or two years later, um, and, um, I'm just asking, I'm gonna still finish it, there were some comments by Jay that I didn't finish the work, well, he asked me to stop doing the work. So, I intend to finish the work, add the wall on Barnum Avenue's side, I'll put lights on the wall, and I'm gonna pave it, and, and that, and that's, that's why I'm here.
Okay, um, so, just so I understand, so are you asking to modify the condition, or you, I, I'm not sure what you're asking us to do, just, can you clarify, clarify that?
Well, I'm asking that the, the, uh, the plan that was approved by DOT-
Yes.
-be approved by the town of Stratford.
Okay. And I believe the plan was provided to us, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
That looks very straightforward, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I might-
Please.
Due to the lateness of the evening-
Yeah.
-I forgot to give you the certificates of mailing.
Oh, good catch. Thank you.
I'll hand it to you.
Um, do you have a paper copy of the DOT plan? If not, Sismeeta, do we have one of those? We don't?
Yeah.
I can read the one.
Well, it's part of the application.
If you don't, we're not gonna hold it up. Oh, you do have one?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Sismeeta has one, Mike. Okay, there you go. Um, while Mike's looking at that, any questions from the other commissioners?
So, I just, I mean, just that, when, when we had done this originally, it was quite some time back, part of it, I know, included Mr. Fred that had some discussion with you as well, about the height, the height of the wall, it was gonna be a center, center opening that would allow you to park on the right and left, did-
No, the original one was just, the old curb cut was on the right side of the property along the fence of People's Bank.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, so, when we submitted the, when we submitted the plan, uh, the engineer used the existing curb cut. And then we discovered after being able to use the property for a year and a half, uh, that, that, that wouldn't work for us. We, we, we would've had to either move it to the center of the, of the, of the property or add, or leave that and just add a second one, so we'd have access, 'cause we have trucks that come in every day, uh, picking up and delivering vehicles, and this is the most efficient, effective way to use that property.
So, we'll still have the three-foot high?
It's still gonna have the wall, the wall's there now. I didn't finish it because I was told to stop.
And, and, I mean, it, it's not paved, it's been-
It's not paved because I, again, I, I was told, I got a cease and desist order to stop all work there by Jay.
And, and there was another, maybe it was a separate application as well, some of the work that was on Main Street, on your, on your main property, included planting strips around the front edges of the property, you were gonna do some work on the-
Well, that wasn't, well, I have, I have five properties over there, and there's been a discussion on all five of them, and I've done a lot of work on the corner of Essex and Barnum, and I've done some landscaping on that corner, and, uh, you know, there's, there's nothing that, uh, is in the works for the main property right now.
No, just on the corner of Essex, I think, where you were talking, it was part of it included, I think, the house that's there, part of it included the old gas station and turning that into some kind of a detailing. There was, there was grass, planting strips around the entire property, but that, that might've been a separate application, they were presented at the same time?
Yeah, no, that wasn't, I-
It was a separate application, okay. Yeah, I mean, check your records, there was, there was planting strips and, and a bunch of other work that was supposed to take place there, but, so, I mean, I get, so this is just changing the two, the two-
Right.
-curb cuts on this?
Yeah, that's it.
What, I mean, when's this property, when's the work gonna be done? It's been-
As soon as I get approval. I've been, you know, the state won't sign off until the town signs off, and the town won't sign off until the state signs off, so I'm kinda stuck in the middle.
And you're gonna be doing some type of work- And you're going to be doing some type of work on the Barnum Ave?
On Barnum Ave, I'm going to do the same three-foot wall. It'll be one entrance and there'll be lights on it, just like this side.
Okay.
Were there any comments from Mr. Evansky or?
There is a letter that he wrote.
Hi, I have a question.
Mr. Vigliati.
All right, so, yeah. You were, in 2018, the plan was approved. Three trees were supposed to be planted?
That wasn't part of the approval. There are on file probably a dozen plans because we were going back and forth with different ideas. The tree idea wouldn't work where that is because I have trucks going in and out of there and it would be a safety issue that would block the view of these trucks that come in and out of Main Street.
So, you're saying that
The only thing that was specifically detailed in the approval, to my understanding, were the three-foot wall and the lighting.
So, it says, "Trees and shrubs."
Well, trees and shrubs pertains to the front lawn, which we haven't finished because
You can't finish.
We can't finish.
So, when you get approval to finish?
Right. Then, I plan to put some kind of landscaping in front of the wall. Trees or shrubs. I mean, we didn't design it yet, but
Well, the approval says, "Three trees and then shrubs would be planted behind the wall."
I don't see the point of putting trees behind the wall that you can't see. I don't
No, it says shrubs behind the wall.
Well, shrubs behind the wall that you can't see. I don't see how that's even reasonable. Why would you put shrubs behind the wall you can't see?
And I do remember the conversations and, from what I remember, it could be Mr. Fredette or Parkman, but part of the reason why we lowered the wall to three feet was so that, as you stated, you would have visual access to the parking lot so your cars wouldn't be getting damaged and robbed and whatever else. I do remember that part of it, that the wall be lower. Originally, Mr. Evansky wanted a taller wall with an archway.
Right.
And in our discussions, we reduced that to just a smaller decorative wall that would allow you visual access into the parking lot.
Right.
So, I don't know that the shrubs would have been part of that, but I don't have the paperwork, but I'm just going from memory.
Commissioner Fresh there. So, the only deviation of this is just the two curb cuts? That's it? Or is there more?
Yeah, that's it.
I mean, I was on the original. I don't have a problem with the change. You know, it seems pretty simple and straightforward, so. I mean, the other things, I think there's some open-ended issues from, and we don't even get into that discussion tonight, but I think there's some open-ended issues on some of the other applications. There's some stuff you guys are going to have to address and just go back and look at the records and see exactly what it says so that you're aware of the full extent of what you agreed to and what we voted on that night. But as far as this change, just to expedite the process, it's been, you know, grassy and overgrown just to clean that area up. I wouldn't be opposed to it. It's a minimal change in my eyes.
It will certainly expedite the process. If you approve it, then we can go ahead and finish. Yes. But right now, we can't do anything.
Just because it's been brought to my attention, this was the planting plan, I believe, that was submitted? Is that correct? You can come in here if you want to say
We've seen that.
You've seen that?
I believe that's the plan that's in the file. And again, as my client has said, after he started the process, he realized that that was not doable because, first of all, the question of ingress and egress and, second of all, the question of visibility, having particularly the trees block sightlines, the vehicles that were coming in and coming out. So, that has to be addressed, but we have to get this addressed first before we can address that.
Okay.
Well, that's part of the problem, yes. Exactly. Because this is a state highway and we have to do what they tell us is acceptable.
Mr. Fredette?
Yeah, if I may. Witnessing it during the daytime, the two curb cuts or the two driveways that are there now have added tremendously of keeping the trucks off the street. Whereas, Mr. Curran states that they offload and unload the trucks. So, again, it wasn't part of the original and he's, you know, I don't see it being an issue.
You do not see it as being an issue?
It's not.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Any further questions from members? Hearing none. We'll take a motion to close. Motion to close, Mr. Henrich. Second, Mr. Francis. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. We'll be taking it up this evening.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Last but not least, and again, my apologies, 2965 Main Street Petition of George J. Perham Seeking a Site Plan Review and Special Case to Establish an Art Gallery and Tattoo Studio in a CA Zone.
Chairman, Commissioners, Chris Russo with Russo and Rizio LLC, offices at 10 Sasko Hill Road in Fairfield, here on behalf of the petitioner, George Perham. I will try to be as succinct as possible. We are here for site plan review and special case approval to establish an art gallery and tattoo studio. The property is located at 2965 Main Street. property is here at 2965 Main Street. It is owned by the same owner of the 2979 Main Street. That is the Little Red School of Art and Music, which many of you may be familiar with. And it is located in the CA Zone. It has direct access from Main Street, a single driveway that enters here to a parking area behind the existing building. There is also a access point back on James Street. There's a gate, there's a fence that runs along the entire rear property line and there's a gate here that accesses out to James Street. We went to ZBA previously and received approval from ZBA for some variances that I'll discuss. Part of the, one of the conditions of approval was that this gate would be used for emergency purposes only. And so, we would, you know, accept that as a condition of approval should it be granted tonight. The site contains an existing two-and-a-half-story building, which I'm sure many of you have driven by thousands of times. It contains a little over 3,000 square feet floor area. And again, the parking area is to the rear. The petitioner proposes to establish an art gallery and tattoo studio within this existing building, which is permitted in the CA Zone under Section 7.1.13. And again, subject to special case approval. It is a regular retail service use. The regulations do put some extra requirements on tattoo parlors. It's a bit outdated. Tattoo parlors, which I think the view of tattoo parlors has changed over the years, but it is lumped in with adult-oriented businesses. And there is a regulation that requires separation of uses. So, that tattoo parlors have to be separated from residential districts and certain other uses. We received a waiver. I have a copy of that that I can submit for the record, but we received a waiver from the zoning board of appeals for that requirement. It's right here. So, this was just received on July 7. It could be, maybe you have a copy in the file? Okay. So, the, really, we're not asking for much of a change from what is currently there. This current building is used for music lessons, art lessons. It's an art studio. And what we're proposing is just a different, basically a different type of art. Mr. Perham, his son, has run a tattoo parlor that's further down on Main Street. It has been there for 11 years and it's also in the CA Zone. He has had no complaints and is well-respected in the area. And he's simply looking to move up to this property, again, in the CA Zone on Main Street to do his work there along with some fellow tattoo artists. But in reality, it is the same thing. It is a form of art. Mr. Perham is extremely talented and his fellow tattoo artists. It's not, you know, your girlfriend's initials with a heart around it. It's an actual piece of art that they spend a lot of time working on to, you know, for their clients. I'm going to ask Mr. Perham to come in. He's going to explain the operation to you. But again, this is, and I'll come back to speak as to the special case standards, but this is really, it is an existing art studio, music, it's where music lessons are held and it's going to switch to a tattoo parlor, which is really, you know, almost the same exact thing, just a different form. So, Mr. Perham, if you want to come up and
Good evening. For the record, my name is George Perham. I'm the president and owner of Villa Visionary Interiors Architecture. My address is 301 Merritt, 7 in Noah, Connecticut. I'm the architect for FTS Gallery and more importantly, it's my son, or just as importantly, it's my son. So, tonight, this is actually the type of client that, you know, is easy to work for because for all intents and purposes, we're not really doing any construction whatsoever with the exception. So, we have the first floor and the existing footprint remains. We have reception office, art gallery, artist booth where George's booth will reside and then a kitchen and lavatory for the staff. On the second floor, we have five other artist booths that will be relocated to here. And then on the top floor is basically just storage and sort of a getaway for the artist when they're not dealing with a client. George and I met with the fire marshal and the building inspector and they have approved the plan because it's not a change of use. They didn't require any construction whatsoever. George also met with the health department and the only comment that the health department had was that we had to add a slop sink. So, just for the record, each booth by health codes requires a sink in each booth. We had that already and that was basically signed off on. And then they wanted a slop sink somewhere conveniently on either one of the floors. So, that said, you know, for all intents and purposes, the house is moving ready. In regards to the exterior, we're not doing anything to the exterior as well. George loves the house. It's historic value and it's well-known, as we all know, as the Little Red School, Little Red Art House. And he doesn't want to change that character. So, that's all going to stay and stay the way it is. And so, for all intents and purposes, that's sort of easy. You know, this is the kind of client that I don't really enjoy. I don't make a lot of money from them, but, you know, nevertheless, we're seeking approval. Thank you.
To just go over the standards of approval for a special case, which were cited in Jay's memo to the commission. Will the location, size, and intensity of such use be compatible and harmonious in relation to the size of the property and existing neighborhood development? Yes, as stated, you know, as we've stated, there's no change to the exterior of the site. We are making internal changes. What are currently six music lesson rooms are going to be converted into artist booths. It's very controlled. The patrons will make appointments. Sometimes they will meet with the tattoo artist first to go over the design and work it out and make tweaks to it and then actually come in for another appointment to get the tattoo. So, it's not people coming in and out. It's very controlled. It's not an intense use. And again, nothing changing to the exterior, to the entrance to the site or the parking area. Then, in comparison to the neighborhood around, to the south is a medical office building. There's a shopping plaza. Across the street is Bank of America and the Citgo Gas Station. And so, this is frankly, one of the least intense uses around in that area. Will the proposed use be in conformance with the town plan of development? Yes, it's in conformity with the regulations. This is a commercial retail service use. It had previously been a commercial retail service use and so is in keeping with that. It also promotes the culture and arts in the city. It, what Mr. Perham does is he actually puts paintings up on the wall from local artists to create a sense of this is, you're coming in for a piece of art. You're not just coming in here for a simple tattoo. It's a celebration of art. The name of the gallery is actually Forest to Shore Gallery, which I'm sure you know is the motto for the town. And this property was specifically approved years ago for a zone change to the CA district to bolster the commercial corridor on Main Street, which is one of the goals of the POCD. And obviously, as a proposed retail service, under that zone, we believe we're furthering the POCD. Will there be any emission of noise, light, smoke, odor, gas, dust, or vibration that may adversely affect land, water, or air quality? No, definitely not. We're not even doing work outside and the use certainly is all in the interior. Will it adversely affect the tax valuation of neighboring properties as a result of the proposed use? No. Again, this property's already been used and approved as a music and art studio. It is changing to a different type of art studio. It's a very professional operation. It's not a tattoo parlor with flashing neon signs or some of the, you know, kind of old taboo ones that people may think of. It's very professional and will not stand out. And finally, will the proposed use create any fire or police hazards? No. Obviously, again, there's no change proposed and this use wouldn't threaten that. We don't believe it will have any impact on traffic. Frankly, our traffic would probably be less than the current use that was there. They used to offer group lessons for the music lessons. This is all one-on-one. And that's basically it. There's, if there's any questions, Mr. Perham certainly can answer or myself.
Questions from members? Mr. Henrich?
So, it's really been there 11 years?
His gallery that he's
I was on the original.
Yeah, me too.
Oh, we were, okay.
I was just realizing that was a long time.
I'm getting old.
We are getting old.
So, at the time, one of the big discussion was that this is not, this is not a biker shop.
Right.
You know, seedy tattoo place. It's actually art. Actually, his mom came up and showed a painting of a tattoo she has. But it is art. It's another form of art and I know George is well-known around the world and I've been up to his shop. It is an art studio. I'm assuming he's going to, the same kind of concept?
Absolutely. He's basically just moving that up to the site.
Yeah. And it's all, you said it's all by appointment, so
Yeah, it's by appointment and sometimes it takes several appointments for
Because he was over Acapulco's. 'Cause, 'cause he was over Acapulco's.
Correct.
And there was limited, you know, there was limited space, limited availability, so, you know, it was low impact. It's been there 11 years. We've heard nothing negative.
No, yeah, nothing.
You know, if anybody who knows anything about the tattoo world speaks barely highly of him and his artistic abilities, but there, to my knowledge, have been no negative complaints of, of any kind.
No, and he's, he's, he's been a great participant in the community, helping with a number of charities in the town, and, and, and it's, it's Stratford's home for his business, and that's why it's called Forest to Shore.
Awesome. So, all right, so it's gonna be, it's basically gonna be identical to what it is now, just moved to a different location?
Yeah, a little bit more breathing room and, and different locations.
Okay. And then there were some other comments from, I think, the health department. Plan should include application specification sheets for the floors and walls, equipment shall be smooth and easily be cleanable, adequate lighting shall be provided, and I assume you guys are aware of all those.
Yes, and we would agree to those as condition of approval.
All right, that's all I had.
Questions from other members? Mr. Francis?
Yeah, the only, well, you said that you were gonna actually conform to those conditions and also the condition for the, the access for the James Street rear entrance.
Correct.
So all those conditions, you're definitely going to be...
Yes, part of our Z B A approval as well, but yes, and, and for, for this approval, we, we would accept that as a condition of approval.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Just for emergency purposes.
Anything else, Mr. Vigliotti?
Uh, I, I don't know if, is, is the artist here? Like, hi. So you, you use needles and things like that to, to make a tattoo, correct? And then...
Yeah, why don't you come up and just give us your name and address? Mr. Vigliotti wants a demonstration too, so, you know, be ready.
George Perham, 2415 Main Street is the shop address now.
Uh, so I, I'm just curious, like, so in, in terms of like, you know, keeping those things clean, and, and I don't even know, like, do, do you have any kind of like...
Everything that we use is disposable, so it's all one-time use, all gets put into biohazard, and we have that all professionally picked up. That's all documented, and the health department checks that twice a year when they come and inspect us.
So, so you have a, a service that comes and takes away all that stuff?
Yeah, all the biohazard stuff, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, anybody else? Um, my only question is, on the third floor, I don't see anything labeled. Are you doing anything with the third floor?
That's just gonna be, uh, storage.
Storage? Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, anybody in the, there's anybody left? Is there anybody that we should speak in favor or opposition? Hearing none. We'll take a motion to close. Mr. Vigliotti, second. Ms. Manos, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously. And at long last, we'll take a motion to close our total public, adjourn our, recess our public hearing. Mr. Francis, second. Ms. Manos, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously. We're adjourned at, uh, we're recessed out of the public hearing at 11:16. Yes, sir.
Did we get all of the applications?
There are two items, Lordship Boulevard and Benton Street, that are listed on our administrative agenda, so I believe we'll take it as during, during the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, we won't, we won't let it, we won't lose that. Does anybody need a bathroom break? Any break of any kind?
I do.
You did it. I need to grab a glass of water. I'm just dry, drying out right now. So, so actually, Mr. Henrick, you're our vice chair. How would you like to preside over the, uh, starting the discussion? And, or do you want a break too? We can take a break.
I'd like to take a break.
I just need two minutes to get some water, and I'll be right back. So we'll, we'll stand at ease, and we'll pick up in just two minutes, okay?
Mr. Henrick, I just want to let you know that for 214 Benton Street, the Waterfront Harbor Management Commission has requested some more time to review that application. So I don't know if you would want to discuss it this month, or...
No.
They said their meeting, their next meeting is in August 1st week, or August 11th or something. Yeah.
I have to see that. Five, six, two, three, four, five weeks.
Okay.
One more day.
Oh, well, I don't know.
No, it can. Uh, 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 uh. Do you have any...
For the platypus?
Yeah.
What?
With a little...
Uh, it, August 26th is the, is the time when you have to render a decision, so you have two zoning commission meetings before that, August 11th.
No, it's 26th.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I have, uh, I, I, I...
I'm not ready. Yeah, there is, yeah, yeah. Okay, I'm gonna call to order the administrative session of the zoning commission. We are, just for the record, we are not going to take up 4060 Beach Drive, Washington Parkway. It's gonna be a protracted discussion, and I think we need to be able to deliberate, and it's way too late to deliberate. So there. So let's pick up, let's start with 584 Success Avenue. Mr. Henrick, you wanna make a motion to take it off the table?
Motion, well, you mean take it off the table, or...
Yep, take it off the table. Yep.
Motion to take 584 Success Ave off the table.
Motion of Mr. Henrick, is there a second? Mr. Vigliotti, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve 584 Success Ave.
Motion to approve it, Mr. Henrick. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Francis, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
It seems like that the, the use is, is fairly benign for the area. They, they've started some of the work. They, in a sense, did some prior to their knowledge that they needed to go through this permit process. There were no complaints at the time. Uh, it seems to fit. It's a commercial, commercially-sown district, is, is not, uh, is in, is in character with the other, the other operations in the area. I would make a motion to approve.
Okay. Further discussion, members?
And I, and I think just one other point is, they've been made aware, if they do any special large gatherings, they, they will need to come to get special permits for those, so...
Yeah, I believe that we, that was a good thing, that we had that discussion in front of them and their council, so that they're aware of what the procedures are. Um, I know they're gonna be utilizing that, they may end up utilizing that rear parking lot, and it seems like appropriate notice has been given to the abutting property owners. I tend to, I will agree with you, sir. It seems like this is a, a good move there, and that they seem to be very responsible with what they're doing in the place. Further comments from members? Mr. Vigliotti?
Yeah, uh, part of the comments had to do with proper certification and inspection.
Yes.
They, they did get the fire marshal, but it didn't appear that there was any other, if, if they had been be, before anybody else, they seemed to have done most of the work before they... So I don't know if that's, I'm saying the same thing, but I think that that should be a stipulation for approval as well.
Yep. I'm just looking through the notes real quick here. This was also a special case. I didn't get the impression that there was gonna be any emission of noise, light, smoke, odor, gas, and the usual things.
All, all the health department and building permits will come...
Yeah.
Once they officially begin the work, I think, so...
And they're not gonna have a liquor permit either, so that takes that off the, you know, we'll obviously have to monitor if there's any issues, but it seems like they're acting up and up. And it's, I don't believe there's any issue with the planned conservation development, so it's actually using a retail use as a gathering space. Seems pretty straightforward to me. Mr. Tull?
I think what Mr. Vigliotti is mentioning is the last line in the staff report, where Jay mentions that they have to legalize any work that has been done before submitting for the permit, and maybe that should be a condition for the approval. Like, I mean, didn't you mean that?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't get that, sorry.
I, I probably could say that.
Can we add, would you object to adding that? Okay, we can make that a condition of approval. And the second, or Mr. Francis, I think it was, I think we're good to add that in there. Further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, motion to take 2792 Main Street, Curran Volkswagen, Inc., off the table.
Motion of Mr. Henrick to take 2792 Main Street off the table. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Manos. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously.
Chairman, motion to approve 2792 Main Street, Curran Volkswagen.
Motion to approve by Mr. Henrick to approve 2792. Is there a second? Mr. Vigliotti? Uh, discussion has been made and seconded, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
This seems like a small, small deviation from the original application. The, the state DOT has looked at it and approved it. It'll prove the efficiency, it'll help them expedite what it is they're looking to do and make their effective. It's been sitting for a long time, and anything we can do to get that lot cleaned up, there seems to be no negative impact to it whatsoever, so I would be in favor of it.
Okay, further discussion by members? Mr. Francis?
Yeah, um, do, do we have to do any kind of mediation if he doesn't proceed with the original bushes, uh, behind the wall?
So...
So when I looked at the plan, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Uh, I did not see a stamp, a date stamp on it. So I don't know, like he said, whether there was a plan in the works, or there was a final plan submitted.
My recollection was, and I think Mr. Fredad will concur, that, that the shrubs and brushes weren't a part of it, because that, the, the reason why we lowered the wall was to allow better sightlines, and, and adding shrubs or trees of any kind would have, would A, deter your sightlines to the road, and B, deter your visual sightlines into the lot, so...
Please, sir.
The original bushes and shrubs were supposed to be over on the Essex Street.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought. That's why I was a little confused as to which property we're actually talking about when we started that, and it's like, oh no, wait a minute, this is the other side of the street, so...
That, that's what the tree, the shrub, the tree, that's what we discussed.
But the only, so the only change we're making with this is, is the, the curb cuts. Any other, any other criteria of the original application would not change.
Right. I mean, right now, it seems like he's in a, in a state of paralysis between the state approval and the, the town approval, and it's a state highway, and it seems like we're not getting anywhere fast. I don't see a major problem with this application.
We're not, but we're also not taking any, away any of the other criteria.
No.
Just this one.
Yep.
Minor alteration.
And if it seems to be working more efficiently, I'm supporting that.
Yep.
Uh, without, with, with no decrease of any of the other, uh...
Any other stipulations.
Right, stipulations, and it's only, it's not extreme, extreme deviation.
Mm-hmm.
It's only an extra curb cut. Um, I, I definitely would approve this application.
Okay. Further remarks? If not, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, motion to take 2965 Main Street, George J. Perham, off the table.
Motion of Mr. Henrick to take 2965 Main Street, George J. Perham, off the table. Is there a second? Mr. Vigliotti, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously. Mr. Henrick?
Mr. Chairman, motion approved, 2965 Main Street, George Perham.
Motion to approve 2965 Main Street. Is there a second again? Mr. Francis, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Perham, Forest to Shore Art Gallery Tattoo Shop has been a great, a great neighbor over the Acapulco's property. They've, they've, you know, in, in the tattoo world, they've, they've put Stratford on the map. He's also got the art gallery. Um, it's, it's an, almost identical use to what's there now. It's just a diff, different form of art. But I think based on, on Forest to Shore's past history and their, their location to a, to a similar, maybe even more similar to, to what they're, they're doing, I would, I would support this application.
Okay, further discussion? Mr. Francis?
Yes, I also had a lot of positive feedback about that, that tattoo art that they provide. They've been there for a while, and I've known about them. I have a couple of friends that are in that industry, and I've heard nothing but positive things, so I would approve them also.
Okay. Mr. Tull, do you have a remark?
Yes, the third floor plan, if that could be labeled as storage, that'll be helpful for enforcement's sake in the future.
Okay. Should Vigliotti, Ms. Manos, anything? No? Okay, I'm, I'm gonna echo the remarks of Mr. Henrick, and it is in conformance with, with our plans. I actually remember, I can't believe that was 11 years ago, I think I actually voted against it the first time, and I gotta tell you, the, the, the feedback I've gotten has been very positive all around, so I was wrong at that point. But I'm, you know, I'm, I'm glad that I can admit that, and I'm, I'm glad to see actually the repurposing of the Little Red Schoolhouse. I've known a lot of people that have taken advantage of their programs. It's an asset in the community and a well-known landmark, so that continuing its commitment to the arts scene in Stratford, arts community in Stratford, even if it's in a slightly different way, I think is actually a positive. And we will obviously, the B Z A is part of their approval, so that should still stay in, as part of the approval as well. I don't think we have to separately state it, but I think it's, it's implied that that will stay there. I think we're good to go.
And, and the only other stipulation was the use of the rear gate for emergency.
Use of the rear gate, which that was...
But that, that was with another...
That was with the B Z A, right?
B Z A, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Yes, just a little...
Yes.
Quick question.
Mm-hmm.
So how would we accept the new site plan without your condition on that, that they should resubmit a site plan with a label on it, on the third floor?
Can we just record it on the, I'm not gonna hold it up, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I mean, if...
You don't want to, okay.
I mean, if you want to write it, handwrite it in on the plans right now.
We can, we can make that a stipulation of, of the approval, that the, the new...
Yeah.
...plan would, would clearly...
You know, let's, let's, let's do it, let's do it that way. Can you actually make a motion that affects, so that it's very clear in the record, say you motion to, we stipulate?
Make a mo, I'd make a motion to amend my, my motion to require a site plan be submitted clearly labeling the third floor. That's what you thought, the third floor as storage.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes.
Second of Mr. Vigliotti. Okay, any discussion on the amendment? I think that should satisfy the conditions there, and they'll be clear, and it should just be administrative, and to drop off a new copy of the thing with it labeled, yep. All right, all in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
All right.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously. Any further discussion on the application as amended? If not, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously. Congratulations, best of luck.
Do you want to...
Yeah.
Do we have anything with the campsite, or can they all...
No, let's just do approval of minutes. Oh, Benton is part of the campsite.
But that's gonna wait.
Um, oh, Lordship Boulevard, they're all part of the campsite. So we'll take, so let's just do approval of the minutes, and then we'll get down, right down to the last two parts. So can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes of June 23rd, 2021.
Motion to approve, Mr. Henrick, is there a second? Second by Ms. Manos, any discussion, corrections, changes? If not, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously. Our campsite reviews, again, 4060 Beach is staying on the table, so 775 975 Lordship Boulevard is the petitioner, applicant, still standing with us. Good evening. Okay, Ms. Tona, can you please just bring us up to speed here? It's been a long night.
Yes, um, so, uh, the petition is to, uh, sta, to downsize, uh, the master plan that was previously submitted a few years ago by the petitioner. So, um, in the staff report, if you see, um... Let me just, just... Sorry.
No problem.
Okay, um, I have the two fourteen Benton Street. I'm sorry, my paperwork is all over the place. But I would like to let you know, uh, before I move on to this paperwork, that, um, this was, um, sent for, uh, Connecticut DEEP's feedback on, uh, May fourteenth, I guess, or sometime in June. But DEEP staff was busy with enforcement, they never got back with their comments and they kind of, you know, uh, the window of offering the feedback, uh, has passed. Uh, it's been more than, um, thirty-five days.
Mm-hmm.
They requested for more time, but, uh, technically, you know, you don't have to abide by it, uh, because they did not render a decision in time. And, um, this application, um, is pretty straightforward. It was previously approved as part of a master plan department. I, at the, I would let the applicant speak to the, uh, square footage of the previously proposed, um, building. But now it is roughly sixty-three thousand square feet, uh, so they're downsizing it, um, and I would like Mr. Casey to take over.
Casey, you wanna give us the, uh, the two-minute version?
Good evening and thank you all very much. Uh, well done, uh, to get to this point and I will be as brief as I can. Um, this, uh, plan was approved in two thousand sixteen, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred square foot, uh, facility on nine seventy-five Lordship. At the time, there was, uh, nothing shown on seven seventy-five, two-point-three acre parcel. But going back before that, there was five hundred and thirty thousand feet. So, I mean, the master plan has had, uh, a, a large, uh, development with large parking. And the important thing to, to look at is, uh, you know, the history of this application going back from two thousand fourteen to now. It started with five hundred and thirty thousand feet. We came back and got FedEx approved for two hundred and twenty-five. We got a hundred and thirty-seven thousand approved, but couldn't get the deal done and now we're back with sixty-three thousand. So you've got forty-two acres with a lot less building than was originally permitted. And in addition to that, all the stormwater development plans were designed to, um, manage five hundred and thirty thousand feet of, of building with the maximum parking permitted, uh, close to twenty-nine acres. As the plan stands before you today, uh, the request to have it modified reduces that stormwater almost three acres. So, um, we're actually going to have three acres less of impervious area. However, the improvements for the stormwater have already been installed, they're already on the site, so we have far in excess of anything the DEP could wanna see with any comments they were to give us, uh, if they had given us some. And I have their comments from two thousand sixteen and they were very similar with stormwater and they were just talking about flood elevations. And at the time, they didn't read the, the revised, uh, flood map in two thousand thirteen and they said we needed to raise the building and that was, you know, three years after FEMA had changed the elevation. So we're in full compliance with anything DEP gave us in writing prior. And for the application before you, I think we have just a couple of things that were submitted. We had comments from John Casey and we had comments from staff. We introduced letters, I have some, if you don't have them, um, I can hand them in. And we also, uh, went through the ARB, they made five recommendations and we responded to all five. There's, uh, again, a letter was, that was sent as well and I, I'm not sure what you all have before you, uh, with Jay on vacation and so many things going across your desk this evening.
Yeah, let's just make sure we have everything. I think we do.
And you're
Go ahead, Mike.
The, the, the five stipulations from the ARB, you guys are, are in agreement with?
They're, they're in agreement, but not a hundred percent. I mean, there's a, there's a response to each one. I think the one that, um, they talked about, uh, uh, moving the facade, rotating the building was, we're gonna just plant some things to sort of, you know, keep the building square to the sightlines and just shield it with some, some, uh, shrubbery and stuff. Uh, but again, there were five comments, I would say four were very close to what they asked for and I have it, if you wanna see it, I'm happy to give it to you.
And they've agreed with your, with your?
Well, they don't get a, they just make a recommendation and then we come before you and, 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 and talk about what we can accommodate and then hopefully we, we, uh, have done enough. First time through ARB, by the way, so.
No, I appreciate you take, you know, uh, considering what they have to say. So they, they have, let's see, five comments here. Increase and improve landscaping along Lordship Boulevard, including all parking areas between the one-way drive and the existing retention basin. That's one.
And we, I don't know if you have the responses, but I, I do.
Maybe I do.
We're adding six new, uh, white fir trees, uh, and there are two existing street trees along the frontage. Supplemental to these trees, eleven new evergreen shrubs will be added, will grow to six-foot height. So, I mean, their first comment, we pretty much, uh, I think addressed.
Okay, let me just go to number two. Number two, move the parking area of lot three to the south to allow for landscape along the road if consistent with zoning regulations.
And so that, that parking plan was modified to not share an entrance with the FedEx parking lot to keep the tenants separate.
Mm-hmm.
There's a sidewalk on some of that frontage, so part of our property had to be dedicated to the sidewalk because there is not enough state land to accommodate the sidewalk, so that ate up some of the land.
Mm-hmm.
But there are, uh, existing, uh, uh, street trees that were planted and we're adding, uh, evergreen shrubs along the frontage so that the screen, uh, to the parking area, the Lordship Boulevard should, uh, should be accommodated.
What was the one that you could not conform to? Let's cut to the chase.
Um, that's a great question.
Yeah.
Consider articulation of the north-facing facade along Lordship Boulevard. Basically rotating the building.
Oh, okay.
Um...
Oh, okay, I see what they said, okay.
Pretty, pretty far-reaching with some of those.
That's, 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 that's a pretty big, large reach.
They're all architects, right?
Yeah.
So, uh, the applicant's proposing forty-seven evergreen shrubs north of the one-way drive aisle, north of the frontage facing the building that will grow to two to three feet height and the plantings will provide additional screening of the north face inside of the building in addition to the street trees and the natural vegetation at the detention pond such that any building facade improvements will not be necessary. That was the only one I think we
Yeah, that, that
met them.
That seems a bit of a stretch, so, yeah.
And then the town engineer's comments and Jay's comments are, are, again, those are, I'm pretty sure documents you have. Uh, the town engineer's comments are mostly related to stormwater, just mopping up on what's required and we're a hundred percent in compliance, um, on stormwater.
Okay, uh, Mr. Tona?
Um, DEEP also needed more time because they didn't have drainage plans and they kind of, I see where they're going based on what town engineer has commented on.
Yep.
So if you will, you know, if you as a commission will choose to adhere to the town engineer's comments, I'm assuming it will satisfy DEEP's concerns as well.
Okay, they...
I'm just gonna add, DEEP and everyone else is looking at meeting the most recent regulations. Well, we're next to the bathtub. We don't discharge anything to the town's systems. And as I explained earlier, we designed for twenty-nine acres of impervious area. Um, we improved, we built all those improvements, the ponds were designed to that size and we're actually, uh, gonna end up with three acres less and that pretty much whittles down all the stormwater comments.
Okay, so if we, just to move things along, so if we approve pending, you know, conformance with the DEEP, if they have any major concern, then we're not thinking of...
Well, I won't agree to anything that DEEP hasn't submitted
Okay.
blanketly.
Mm-hmm.
That's just nothing I can do. I have their comments from the two thousand sixteen application. I'd submit those on the record. Um, and here's what I would like to say to you all. They told us that we had the wrong elevation for the building.
Mm-hmm.
They said you have to raise the building. Their letters dated two thousand sixteen.
Okay.
The FEMA flood plans that were in effect at the time
Mm-hmm.
were revised in two thousand thirteen. They didn't even roll out the right map to write the letter that they sent on comments. So we, we, we knew what the requirements were.
Mm-hmm.
And that was their comments. That was, uh, all the comments they issued to us and I'm very leery of agreeing to anything DEP hasn't said yet.
Okay, I got, understand. So, just, just, let me understand this. So, so they, they had a deadline to reply. They haven't. Which I understand, you know, but deadlines are deadlines. And, Mr. Casey, if, uh, i- is this time-sensitive, this approval for you?
August tenth is my kill switch, so if I don't leave with, uh, hopefully what you all are willing to grant here this evening, it just goes back into the washing machine. I don't know what's gonna happen. I started this in April.
Yep, understand.
And I appreciate the question.
Mm-hmm. Commissioners, what's your, what's your pleasure?
I mean, he, I, I think he's gone above and beyond.
Mm-hmm.
You know, like, like he stated, he's, he's reduced the footprint, which reduces the requirement, the required size for his, any rainwater retention or whatever it might be, so.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I think, I think he's met and exceeded the, uh, the expectations and the requirements and by reducing it, he's even, uh, lessened the requirement. So, although he's maintained the, the original footprint of, of the retention system, so I think based on that, I mean, and, you know, it's, the government's slow at times, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna ruin his deal based on their, you know...
Right, inability to meet their deadlines.
Their oncoming
If I miss the deadline...
Inland Wetland, um, had no comment whatsoever on stormwater.
Okay, that's, that's...
They, they commented a couple of things which we agreed to, which were unrelated to stormwater.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and, and I, and I think if, if, if the DEP comes back with some requirements, you'll be mandated to meet those, even if we do give you some type of an approval here.
I, I can tell you that they're, they can comment on the application. I doubt they can comment on anything I would have to agree to that I haven't already done. I really, I really doubt that.
I mean, but if they did come back and say you had to, you had to add another thirty feet of trenches, whatever, you'd have to do that, even if we approved this, this evening.
I just hesitate to say yes to DEP because
No, no.
they don't, they don't have facts
Yeah.
when they respond. I mean, I've been doing this for, since nineteen eighty-seven, so I'm not picking on them.
Yeah, but your, your argument would be with them.
What they put in writing, when you question it and get into it, oftentimes is...
But your argument would be with them, not with us.
Correct.
And you're gonna peel it through their procedures
Yeah.
and so on.
Mr. Salavi?
Yes.
I think there is also an opportunity where if I receive any comments, I can send it to the town engineer and when he applies for a drainage permit, if there's something that's absolutely, uh, that has to be taken care of, the town engineer can deal with DEEP and take care of it.
And I will agree to, um, uh, conform to anything the town engineer requires for this plan to go forward, without hesitation.
Thank you, I think a motion's in order.
So I'd make a motion to approve, uh, the approval to include all final, uh, requests by the town engineer.
Is there a second? Mr. Francis, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
All right.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously.
I can't thank you enough.
I thank you for your patience.
We knew it must've been important if you waited this long.
Yeah. Oh...
Now you can go home and tell her it was worth it.
So, you know, it may have worked out, you know? Hard to tell.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Yeah, two fourteen Benton Street first, who don't?
Oh, okay.
Benton, one more, one for the road, two fourteen Benton. Mr. Tona?
I just mentioned, uh, when you were walking away, that Waterfront Harbor Management Commission in their letter requested some more time to review that.
I am hardly in a position to disagree with that request. Motion to table, two fourteen Benton.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Vigliotti, uh, Mr. Henrik, second Vigliotti, all in favor say aye.
All right.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Any zoning enforcement, accessory apartment, sediment erosion, planning, other or goal settings, anything else, everybody?
Anything else will be held over to the next meeting.
I agree. So our next meeting is scheduled for eight, August eleventh. Uh, we may need to use that to handle the little pub. We'll be in touch. If you're gonna be on vacation that day, please shoot me a note or Mr. Habansky when he gets back. If not, we'll come back on the twenty-fifth. If you're on vacation then, also let us know. Motion to adjourn?
Come on.
Mr. Henrik, second. Mr. Francis, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no, carries unanimously. We're adjourned at eleven forty-five.
If you decide to do the eleventh, can you let us know as quickly as possible?
Yes, I will.